Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Worcester School Committee. We have a special night tonight, that's for sure. And just want to welcome everybody here. And if you can, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and the National Anthem. And singing the National Anthem is Stacy Domingo from South High, from South High School. Is Stacy here? Oh, there she is. Okay, we're gonna do the net place first. Aye.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, in whose soul we believe, in whose justice we serve.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's whistling and the bombs bursting in air gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Nice job, Stacy. We have the Student Advisory Committee items. Maybe each, each can introduce yourselves and, oh, each, all three of you are gonna speak? You can do it when you speak then, okay. Go ahead.
Yep, just to introduce ourselves real quick to the chair. Hello, my name's Anhar Daoud. It's very nice to see you again.
What school?
Doherty Memorial High School, the best one.
Um, to the chair, my name is Clarissa Alexis, and I am the North High representative.
Onto the chair, my name is Ariana Costoso, representing South High.
Perfect. Okay, so the first item up is the feasibility, I'm sorry, to establish a formal club organization in schools that provide information for community service opportunities available in Worcester to students in becoming active volunteers in the communities. Additionally, to expand student engagement in all schools and allow for students to make connections within the city.
Uh, to the chair, uh, now, the community service club, or the 365Z Foundation as we know it in my school, is a very personal thing for me. It was created because of the Z in 365Z. It belongs to the first initial of a boy named Zachary, who was a very kind and loving kid. He ended up taking his own life, and his parents decided to strive through this tragedy and make this foundation where we strive to just do one kind thing a day, every single day for 365 days. And this thing, uh, this club, we found out, I personally found out about it my junior year, very late on, and now I'm the president of it, and I have over 120 hours of community service. And it's just something that has really helped me with colleges and just made me a better person, made me feel better about myself. And I truly believe that this should be more spread. Uh, I've talked to some of the other student council members, and I found out that this is a club in only one of the other schools. And I strive to hopefully make this more available and just present in all the other schools.
Okay, thank you. So I'm gonna send that to Finance and Operations. Those in favor, opposed, so ordered. Next is the feasibility to have a study halls in the high school to look to improve academic performance for students. Who's up on that one? I can refer that to teaching and learning, if you like, or? Go ahead.
Uh, so, something else that we talked about was the possibility of adding a study hall to some of the high schools in Worcester. So far, we have been noticing a lot of students are lacking behind on their studies or homework, having a couple hours of homework to do every night, however, not having the time to do it due to a job or just family-related activities. We were thinking of a possibility of just making a study hall an option where there's just a room in a school where you could go relax and do your work, or possibly we can make it a quarter class where, for a semester, we can just have this free period where we do our work. And, uh, I just feel like it'll help boost our GPAs. It's something that I wish we had in our school. I know, uh, one of our friends here has a study hall, and we've heard all the benefits of them. It would be just a major help to all the students and all the students in the audience, I believe, would agree with me.
Okay, thank you. So we're gonna, the motion is there is to refer to teaching, learning, and student supports. Those in favor, opposed, so ordered. Next is to address the heating and cooling concerns in our older buildings.
I'm back, all right. So for the heating and cooling concerns, recently, as you might know, Burnco had to shut down for a whole day because of their cooling concerns or heating. I don't believe this should be happening. Personally, from Doherty, I have heard students complain about the temperature in some classes. And, uh, if some of you might not know, but Doherty, uh, had to basically keep the old building on its legs by buying a $1 million broiler, and that's what's powering our entire school right now while the new building is being built. It's just something that will help, you know, the students become more comfortable in their classrooms, not have to worry about bringing an extra piece of clothing or just, you know, stripping. It's something to help us become more comfortable and focus on our academics.
Okay, thank you. And I'm gonna refer that to Finance and Operations. Those in favor, opposed, so ordered. And next is create a welcoming committee for our new students who come into our schools that do not speak English, to help integrate them into the school community.
Um, to the chair, um, I'll say I personally propose this topic for our agenda today because I've seen how it has positively impacted the students in the North High community. So basically, we do have a welcome committee in our school. Um, it is ran by our wraparound coordinator, and, um, it's just basically like a safe space where incoming students are given the opportunity to connect with other students, um, most of the time that are from similar backgrounds or, um, cultures or just that share the same identity as them, and they're able to, um, connect with those students. So, um, I'll say that's something that I personally would like to see in, um, more of the schools across the city. I know that over the past couple of years, we have had, um, many refugee, um, students come into our buildings, and just providing a space of comfort and inclusivity for them is just something that will benefit them in the long run and, um, just give them access and the opportunity to be successful and build connections with other people, um, especially people that also look like them and that speak the same languages as them, to just form some type of connection and bond and, yeah.
Nice job, all, both of you. And so I'm gonna refer that to the administration. Those in favor, opposed, so ordered. We have the consent approval of the, um, agenda. We can take a roll call on that, roll call.
Member Clancy.
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson.
Yes.
Member Kamara.
Yes.
Member Mailman.
Yes.
Member McCullough.
Yes.
Member Okonkwo Novik.
Yes.
And Mayor Petty.
Yes. Okay, uh, we have Superintendent's Report, and we have, um, the Governor's Minutes, but I know we have Laura, Laura Clancy's family is here tonight in force, so maybe we just do her quickly, is that okay? What's that? Yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah, yeah. And, uh, okay, um, Member Clancy, you're up. Are you, is your whole family here, John? Oh, if they're here, we'll do it, otherwise we'll wait, we'll wait, we'll wait for that. Okay, um. Okay, so, uh, Member Clancy, you wanna sit in the hot seat there? You don't have to, but you're more than welcome. What we can do is too is, uh, is ask what we're done. If the family wants to come down, take a picture with them, you're more than welcome.
Mayor Petty?
Well, I just want to, uh, first of all, I want to thank the family, all our friends coming out, uh, for, Member Clancy, Laura Clancy, and, uh, before I get into it, I just want to say something about the, about the school committee. I think this is probably, I've served for 12 years, it's probably one of the best school committees I've served on, uh, the last two years. I think it was very efficient, and, uh, people worked well together. I'd always agree, some people go away now once in a while, but it's a good school committee, we set the right tone, and, uh, it's unfortunate that we're losing a few members, but, uh, I just want to say to Member Clancy, uh, someone I depended on greatly, someone who worked hard, did a work in the, in the committee and in governance of the last two years and committees before that, and, uh, I just want to thank you for your service. You've been a good friend, you've been a good colleague, you represented the community well, the schools, and, uh, I just think your work in relationship with Superintendent, the administration, has really set the course. This committee, and yourself included, has set a different course, uh, for the, for our students, for our teachers, educators, and something to be proud of. And you should be very proud for your, is it three terms, I think, it's, uh, two, two terms, but, uh, but, uh, I'm very proud, I'm very proud of you, and, uh, you work very hard, and I think the city owes you that a gratitude, uh, for everything that you've done, the sacrifices you've made, uh, here, both personally and professionally, to make a change here. So I do have a couple presentations here besides the chair. First is a, from the Worcester Public Schools, um, recognition of Laura Clancy for dedication and service to the students, staff, and community of the Worcester while serving on the Worcester School Committee from 2020 to 2023. And also, we have a plaque which says, uh, "Skooking member Laura Clancy, presented honor of the dedicated service as Chair of the Standing Committee on Governance and Party Issues, and for your commitment to the students and families of the Worcester Public Schools." So, maybe you can't think of that.
Uh, you guys sit. You guys sit. Member McCullough?
Thank you. So I know for all three of my colleagues who are leaving us tonight, it is not something that we had hoped for any of you to depart, but I, of course, have gotten very close with Laura over the fa- past few years, getting to serve together, and not only do we do our service here on school committee, but we also decided to coach softball together, so that is something we will continue, I hope. Um, so we're not done working together in some way for children, so I'm very happy for that. And, uh, you know, as the mayor said, you're someone that we could depend on and rely on and count on, and who really was here to try to make a difference as a mom who had been really involved in your school's PTO, and really cared about the education of your two girls, Addie and Teagan, who are both Worcester Public School students at Doherty and Nelson Place respectively. You wanted to make effective change for all children, you know, in your capacity in your day job, working with children and understanding a lot of the struggles they faced. Mental health was one of your huge advocacy components, and you didn't back down on it, and you kept pushing for it, and especially throughout COVID and after COVID, and making sure that we really did have services in place for those students, whether they be in-house or utilizing contract services, and knowing how important those were to our kids and to our staff. And as Laura herself would always say, you know, she got into office and 70 days later the world shut down. So, not only did you have to do the regular job that comes with being a school committee member, but you had to learn how to fly on the seat of your pants, buy on the seat of your pants for a pandemic with the rest of us. So it was chaos and pandemonium and phone calls and daily calls, and, what, as we all know, to relive it, we hope we never have to go through it quite like that ever again, but, you know, there were a lot of decisions that had to be made, and they were always made with the best interest of the children in mind. And I will miss serving with you. I am so proud of the work that we got to do together, all of us as a committee, the work that we did in governance, and the work that I know that you've made a lasting impact on will continue, and I hope that you don't go away and that we see you in whatever capacity that it may be, and we know you'll still be the, uh, Nelson Place PTO President for the rest of time. So, um, so congratulations on the work that you have done here as a school committee member, and the job well done, and all that you achieved, and I wish you all the best in your future endeavors.
Member Novik?
Yes, if, I feel, I feel honor-bound to say what I know Jack Foley would say if he were here, which is that he also, of course, was the Nelson Place PTO President, so there's, you know, people talk about, you know, the various kinds of chairs, apparently he was one of those. As Member McCullough noted, uh, you coming in in January and COVID shutting everything down in March was obviously sort of a hallmark of the beginning of your service. Um, and for anyone who thinks that they need sort of a, a long runway or anything like that, um, you demonstrated that, you know, it is possible to jump right in with, um, with all feet and everything else as you go. And honestly, um, when I reflect back to that time, one of my lasting memories will be the ongoing round robin between you and Member McCullough and myself as to who had seen the latest comment from the parent and who was gonna respond to the comment from the teacher, and had anybody forwarded that to administration, and what were we going to do? At the same time that all three of us were coping with a situation in which we had kids who were learning at home, and were reflecting on that experience back to administration, um, and we know how immensely valuable that was, um, that, that lived experience brought to the table at the same time that we all were getting sort of inundated with this reflections of what it was like for various kinds of people. I would say that it not only improved the Worcester Public Schools' response to families and to our staff, but the other thing that I really think that it did is I think that it laid groundwork for this administration, um, because what it did was it said, these are voices, who should be recognized, who should be at the table, who need to be incorporated in our decision-making and our planning, and we know that, I mean, you can, we saw that in the budget calendar that was at FNO this week, we see it formalized in the strategic plan in a number of ways. Um, and so that ongoing frantic conversation, I think, really bore real fruit in terms of what we see before us today. The other thing that I want to comment, as someone who, um, professionally works in public school policy, is that, um, by, by becoming Chair of Governance, you set out to become a policy expert, and you were gonna know it cold, and you were gonna know the rules, and you were gonna know how it worked, and you were gonna make sure that it said what it needed to in the right places at the right time and all of that kind of thing. Um, and so let me just say that not only as a colleague, but also from a professional perspective, um, there's nothing more that I could wish for in a policy chair than that. Um, so I, I don't know if I could convey how high a praise that is, um, but, uh, that's not something that everybody wants to do, but it has, in my perspective, um, really encompasses the attitude that you brought to your service, which was that if you were going to be put in a position, you were going to do it, um, as well as humanly possible. So I'm glad I had the chance to serve with you, I'm glad I had a chance to serve with you during this period, which was so key to the, to the Worcester Public Schools. Thank you for being here, girls, it's kind of you to be here this evening and all of the rest of Laura's family, and, um, obviously wish you well, and also know that I won't be, you won't be a stranger.
Member Johnson, followed by Member Mailman.
Thank you. So, um, actually, yeah, I'm telling you, your hair looks great. Wow, but, uh, no, I'm joking. No, it looks good, it looks good. So I, I got to know Laura years and years ago, 'cause being a DCF social worker and Laura working at DYS, we actually shared some cases together, um, and just knew her professionally working and was always very professional and, and advocated for our older youth that we, we work with, who are sometimes the most toughest population to kind of deal and work with, so I really appreciate that. And then coming on and working with you and getting to know you, you embody that here on the floor, you, you always push for our older kids and making sure that things were right for them moving forward. You know, getting to know you, the other thing I, I really admired was the fact that, you know, people don't understand how difficult it is to commit your time to being a school committee member, and the amount of time that you are out of the home when you're trying to raise kids of your own. And doing that is very, very difficult, and I, I just want to commend you for that, 'cause I believe you are raising two beautiful young ladies here, and, um, I, I really, really do appreciate that. I'm definitely going to miss working with you, I, I mean, I, I think that, you know, all of us had our, our stuff, right, but I found you as the most consistent person, uh, you know, besides when things are going on, I mean, um, you didn't have a very good poker face during meetings, but, um, that's all right, that's all right, but, um, the work that you did, the work that we did together, and I could tell you, and I, and I will speak for everyone in regards to this, I, I would not have wanted to come on this committee and do the work that we done over the past two years with anyone else than you guys. We, we were a great group, I think we, we worked hard, um, and I think one of our biggest accomplishments was the hiring of the Superintendent and the work that we have done over the past two years to work with her and her administration, and the work that we did in governance and that you led, just like Member Novik said, around updating our policies and making sure those are right was, um, outstanding. And again, um, I knew you professionally, I got to know you here, it was great to work with you, and I, I could truly walk away now considering you a real good friend of mine, and I'm so glad I was able to work, work with you and get to know you much better. Thank you for the work you done, Laura.
I had to write everything down for three colleagues, so you're number one. I want you to know that I admire your ability to juggle so many balls as a single mother. To have run for office twice and one is no small feat. You are feisty, you are smart, and you provide a wonderful example, showing your girls that you can be many things at once, a caring mom, an engaged PTO leader, and further an engaged school committee member, serving all of Worcester Public Schools, all while working full-time, and, oh yes, she coached her daughter's softball team this past spring. I'm certain the future will hold lots of good stuff for you, Laura, and your family and your girls, and I wish you the best.
Thank you. Member Kamara?
Thank you, to the chair. I also want to say thank you so much. Um, I know, um, 2019, we ran, we're all on the same track, um, and you, of course, you know, um, hailed forward and became a school committee member in a time where, um, our community really needed that, you know, that, um, individual to kind of step up. And pandemic came, like Molly said, and, um, fast forward, in 2021, you know, then serving in 2022, all served on the school committee together, and even though I didn't serve on the, the same subcommittees as you, um, but I've had the opportunity to sit here with you in the, in this chambers and to really, um, hear the things that you've advocated for, um, and see the fact that you, you know, how you, how you work, um, in DCF and, um, some of the calls that, you, you used to call me sometimes when there's things involving children, um, you know, and, 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 I, I thought that was very remarkable and commendable for you, um, and so I know that there is still more, and I'm always excited to see women stepping up and doing things, no matter what, in what capacity, um, and especially having, having, having children, to see you, you know, do these things, you also creating paths for them as well to also step up, um, as they grow older, so thank you, and I look forward to seeing you in the community and anything that you're engaged with.
Thank you, uh, for Member Clancy, I don't know if you want to take the microphone. Come here, see. And, uh, it's so true. Uh, as Member, as Member Clancy gets her chair and microphone, so I say, here's what Member, um, Johnson mentioned about the faces, like, the faces during COVID on Zoom, the, the only way I get through is by looking at Laura, Molly, and Tracy.
So, just, uh, through the chair, so just to let you know, uh, Member Novik gave me this sticker tonight, and it says, "If my mouth doesn't say it, my face definitely will." So, yeah, I mean, I, first of all, I can't thank my, everyone for being here tonight, it's incredible. And at first, I just want to thank all the voters in Worcester for taking a chance on me four years ago. I came into this with absolutely no political connections at all. Um, I am an educator and a parent who's a PTO president and a softball coach, um, but this experience has made me a better parent and a much better educator, but I could not have done this without the support of this incredible team, um, this administration team, and Rachel, the moment I met you, I knew that you were the one for this city, and it was probably the best vote I have ever taken on this school committee was your hire, and I would, I know I said I would do it again and again, and I, I'm so proud of the work you are doing, and I'm so proud of the accomplishments of this team. And speaking as a parent, not a school committee member, I have seen the effects on my students, my children, and the staff and educators that this team is doing for this city. It's incredible, and I thank you all so much, and I will miss you terribly. To my colleagues, I just want to say, we showed this city just what we can accomplish as a team. We, we, as we said, we haven't always agreed, we've disagreed, but we've always respected each other, each other's ideas, and we got the work done. And as of tonight, I can no longer consider you my employ, my colleagues, but I will say I'm leaving this considering you my friends, and I thank you all, and I thank everyone for being here, and my supporters, and I look forward to what the future holds. Thank you.
Thank you. Just want to recognize, uh, Laura's family, Addie, Addison is here, and, uh, Teagan is here, and, uh, um, you know, you get your mother back full-time, I don't know if that's good or bad, but she'll be there, but, uh, then I think, I think Laura, I think Laura's parents are here too, and her friends and family, and if you want to come down and take a quick picture of some of the family, remember all your family members are, and Laura, if you want to sit in your seat, and we'll pull the other chairs out of there.
Yes, yes. Nice. Oh, nice. Okay.
Does it matter? Mayor Patrick?
Thank you. Another member who we're going to be losing is Gemma Kamara. And Gemma, I just want to say thank you for your service. And what I feel to say earlier too is that the three people who were leaving tonight added a lot of value to the school committee. All different voices. And your voice is important to this council, especially when it comes to young people. And your advocacy for equity and our students was always on the top of your mind. And technology and making sure everything was efficient here in the city of Worcester. I know it's one term, but you had an impact and were able to participate in what we're doing going forward and working with the administration and superintendent. You should know one thing, you made a difference. You made a difference in people's lives. And so I just want to congratulate you on your service. And we do again have a certificate, Gemma Kamara, dedication of the service to students, staff, and community of the Worcester while serving on the Worcester School Committee from 2022 to 2023. This is a good memory. And I always learned in politics is that what do you want to lose? The experience that counts. You got a great experience. So more to come. And also we have a plaque here presented in honor of Gemma Kamara, your dedicated service as a member of the Worcester School Committee and for your commitment to the students and the families of the Worcester Public Schools. So I'll give you this.
Member Melman?
Thanks for calling me first. Gemma, I really believe that your loss on this committee is our biggest loss. You and I often joke about being 30 years apart. And for that reason, and many others, please know that I have been pulling for you all along. I was eager to help you in any way I could, but really, it was you that taught me. Your input on items was unique because of your age and experience and background. Jim and I first met you when you knocked on our door multiple times during your first run for office. You were so impressive and engaging and dedicated to the cause of making a difference in our district. You had us on the first knock. We've talked at least weekly for the past two years and have been fortunate to serve together on two subcommittees for this past term. You push and pull for more data, more equity, simpler access for families. Our conversations on this school committee around wellness and technology and student success are far richer because of your prodding nature. I applaud you. I'm grateful for our time together. I know you will be paying attention to the work in the coming term and beyond. And please know that I'm grateful for your friendship.
Member McCall?
Thank you. Gemma, I certainly don't think there's anyone in this room that probably worked harder with campaigning and brought more passion to the issues that they cared about than you. And having had you as a colleague on subcommittees with teaching, learning, and student support, I think something that will probably continue on is our need and desire for more charts and graphs so that we make sure we get the data in all different ways. And it's important for people to understand and to be able to look at that and extrapolate that data in different ways and understand it better. So I really appreciate the asks that you made that I know that we will continue as we move forward. And we will make sure that we continue to ask for those data, that graph and chart, because it is important. You know, you brought questions and a lens to the table that was different from mine and different from other people on the subcommittee. And it was important. It helped us become better and to look at things in different ways. And certainly, I think, carrying on your requests always of, all right, well, why does this quadrant get this program? How come this quadrant doesn't have it? Or what are we doing for that quadrant to make sure they're getting similar types of experiences for the students? You never backed down from your beliefs on that or your passion around that and the importance on wellness. I mean, that's something you carry through all different facets of your life. And it's what your, you know, higher ed degrees are in and all about. And I know you will continue to use that for the community. And as the mayor said, I know this is not the end. It's just the beginning. And I appreciate the opportunity to have gotten to work with you. So congratulations, and I wish you all the best.
Member Novak?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Gemma, you brought a perspective to this committee that this committee hasn't seen before. And you noted that multiple times yourself. And the other thing that you noted and you have been absolutely right about is that it's a perspective which is overdue. It's a perspective that this committee is going to lose. And it's a perspective that we are going to then be overdue to have back again. The other thing, as has already been mentioned, is the passion that you have brought consistently to the table for justice, for equity, for public health, even with our most recent FNO meeting, for making things right. And not only does the district and the city of Worcester need more of that, but frankly, the world needs more of that. And we know that your service here has only increased your thirst for that. And so what I'll be looking forward to is where you're going to bring that passion next. But that I know will serve you well. And honestly, the world will only be a better place because of the passion that you actually bring to those things. So thank you for being here. Thank you for what you brought to the table for Worcester.
Member Johnson?
Thank you. One of the greatest things I love about Gemma is it's Gemma Kamara, K-A-M-A-R-A. You know, every time we would be out somewhere and she would say that or whatever, I got a kick out of it. But again, that was her presence. And I love that about you. I can tell you, I really loved your fashion and what you brought here on a weekly or every other week basis was great. And again, your hairstyles as well. You know, you know, two years ago, we ran and we got to know each other through the campaign trail. And I never forget, I would go and knock doors and I always saw your flyer there. And I'm like, she is everywhere. And she's beating me to the punch. And the work that you put in is the same work that you came here and you put in here. The passion that you had on the floor. And I know at times, I believe it was difficult to sit on this committee and feel that your voice wasn't being heard as a black woman on a school committee. I felt that. I sensed what you were going through. And we talked about this. And I was with you. And I appreciate that. And the work that you did, as everyone said, talking about equity and making sure that everyone was treated the same in failure or whatever. I don't know if we're going to get that here moving forward on this committee. And that is going to be truly missed. And one thing, people always said to me, you know, what do you think Jim is? I go, Jim is going to do next whatever she wants to do because you have that passion, that fight. You're intelligent. And I believe you'll be back here in two years or doing something else because you are a public servant and that's what you want to do and that's what drives you. And overall, you're overall a better person. And it was great to get to know you. And really going to be missed. Truly going to be missed. Thank you for your service.
Member Clancy?
Thank you. So, yeah, it's tough to be on this side of things. But I, you know, I, as many people have said, like, I loved when you would ever walk in and you were always so happy. And like they said, your fashion sense is just on point. And I loved seeing you every week. And I, you know, and I'm just going to echo what everyone is saying. You always brought that voice to the table that, you know, has been missed on this school committee. And it's going to be missed. But you've left the legacy for other people to follow because it's such an important voice. And I think that, you know, we're leaving some members on this school committee that will remember you and remember the voice that you brought to this, to the school committee and to remember to never leave anybody behind. And that was a huge legacy that you have left on this school committee. It's been an honor to work with you. And I know this isn't it for you. I think, you know, in two years, I'll be surprised if you're not running for school committee or something else because you are a public servant. And I think that you've done an incredible job at it. And I thank you for your work. And I thank you for being a great colleague.
With Gemma, I mean, Gemma's going to say, Gemma, do you want to say a few words? Gemma, I think your family's here too.
Yeah, yeah. To be honest, like, I like to talk, as many people know. And I don't shy away from, like, sharing my views. So I only invited, like, a few people, like my family, and then, like, family from the community. But I want to say that when I was in high school, I went to South High, graduated from the Worcester Public Schools. And I sat in a classroom, in an AP literature classroom. And the teacher never called on me. There was only two black students. It was two girls. And the entire year, he never called on either one of us. And some days, I was like, yes, he didn't call on me because frankly, I didn't know the answer. But then, like, when I got out of school and I went to college and I studied public health and I also, you know, met some issues there and I fought for all the students, they thought I was radical because I was speaking my voice. But Providence College, actually, you know, things were amazing with the kind of things that we did there. But I guess where I'm going with this is that, like, when I grew older or in my, in my career, I just told myself, like, to never not speak up, even if I don't make, think I don't make sense. Because sometimes when young people think that, oh, maybe I don't know as much as this person, so I'm not going to say something. And so I carry those things with me because I wish the Gemma now was the Gemma back then, even though academically I excelled. But there are so many questions I had in the classrooms and I never put my hand up because, or because of that fear of not knowing. So when I get up and speak, I'm like, I don't care. You know, I would ask these questions. And a lot of the times, I don't even know, like, if I'm doing the right thing. But like, whenever I'm in the community, people are telling me, like, I'm so happy you said that. I'm so happy you said that. And one of the things that my degrees has taught me is that we are the expert because we went to school for those things. And in order for you to be the expert, you put in the work. But other people who are in the community don't know the ability or the information, the dialect that you speak. So always be clear. And that was something, a second language I also like, I carry with me. And so when I'm on this committee, I'm always, like, trying to clarify things to make sure that the people who are watching can actually understand what is going on. Because it's so important that the families, whether they are, you know, English language learners or speak different languages, or they went to school in America or don't, they also have the same ability to understand as any one of us here. And so I think I will continue to be that person. And I love this work. And it's been an honor to, like, you know, really dig deeper. I love the fact that I came on board and worked with amazing people who've been here. And I served on two awesome committees, FNO and TLSS, Teaching, Learning, and Student Support, and Finance and Operation. And it was just so enjoyable. Like, every time we were in those meetings, it was so just enjoyable. And sometimes I wish I could serve on all four committees because the topics are so enjoyable. And I think that is commendable. And I think that I'm going to, you know, take all the things that I've learned from Brian Allen, all the staff members here, and also going to each of the schools and ensuring that at least what we're doing here is actually making headways in the various schools and speaking to people and just listening to them. I don't think that's ever going to stop for me. I also want to thank my parents, who, when I told I was running, my mom was like, what? And, you know, and then she, you know, she kind of told me, like, you know, don't run. I'm like, oh, I'm running. You know, my father, who was in Liberia when the first two times when I ran, but he came back from inauguration. And my other extended family who were in Worcester, who pushed me, and they're probably like, this girl is crazy. Because no African person, I'm an African-born person, I don't shy away from that, has ever been elected to public office in Worcester, City Council School Committee, even though we make up a great number of the population here. So for that to be something that became an actual reality in 2021 November, that is great. And I want to tell everybody, all the young girls and everyone in the community that's watching, even though I did not get reelected, that does not mean that, that people like us can't be in spaces like this because it truly means that. It just means that we just kind of have to keep trying again and try other ways. Because, and that's what, that's what it is required. I thank all the voters who voted for me. Quite frankly, without everyone voting for me, I wouldn't have been here, you know, in the first place. And all the people in the community that, you know, that really added value to the work that we do on the school committee and even added value to, by giving me feedbacks and stuff. I really appreciate that. And to the teachers and every one of you here and to my colleagues, to Rachel. And yes, when we, I knew it was you on the first interview when we had, I was in Liberia, by the way, because I was burying my grandmother. And with little electricity, I was under the tree, the cocoa tree, the banana tree with my laptop. I said, I am not letting this, this thing, you know, pass me by because I had to travel. And I was in the hotels, like, trying to get electricity and just internet. But with the first, in the first interview, when I had with, when we all had with you, I knew it was you. And then, you know, and then it just carried through. So I'm just really, you know, impressed to have worked with you and to look at your leadership style and how, like, when we say stuff, you're on the school committee, even though it's so, like, sometimes it's difficult, right? But the way, how you just, you just assume that kind of confidence that you just melt everything away. And it just, it's so helpful. And I think that's, it's not seeing a lot of leadership because sometimes when people feel like they are leaders, they get all, like, hostile and big and bold and whatever. But like, you are really calm. And I think that's something that is, I'm going to actually take with me and I will continue to, you know, stay in contact with you and even support this work because our students so dearly and our educators, everyone so dearly needs that in the school. So you're not going to see less of me. I'll be back in some capacity, God willing. Thank you. And I also want to say thank you to my boyfriend, too. He don't act like me.
Do you want to take a picture with your family? With your family?
Here, do you want me to interview him? Oh, yeah. First of all, last. Well, I mean, I'll, you know, I'll take you with my phone and I'll send them to you. How's that? And Dan, well, Dan, you want to, your, alright, okay. I just want to make sure somebody gets a good one.
Mayor Petty?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Ms. Novick, Tracy. I'm going to miss you. I think the school committee is going to miss you and you, you've added a lot of value to the school committee. There's no question about it. You should be proud and you were never shy about where you stood, never pretended where you stood. It was always upfront, very transparent on every issue that came in front of the school committee. And I appreciate your enthusiasm and your dedication and not just here in the school committee, but for children across the state of Massachusetts, really, if you really think about what you do for a living. And, and you make a difference and you knew, you put a lot of time and effort, not just in the school committee and the rules, which is always good because that's what you do for a living. So you knew the rules, you knew what we could, or we could and could not do. And you know what was going on in the state, the statewide level for policy, which some of us didn't have access to. And you would have access to that, keeping us informed on a daily basis. So what's going on in your emails and much appreciated. And I know later on we're going to take a vote on the transportation, the union and their contract. And you made a difference there too, you started that committee to get that contract done. But you're also, one of the reasons I think you ran was for transportation, your first friend and working with Brian Allen and the administration, were able to bring the contract for the, for the school buses in-house. And it wasn't an easy fight. Took us, I think, two times to get to where we were and, and some pushback. But for savings over a couple million dollars per year, which could be used for other things in the Worcester Public Schools. And I do love seeing those new buses driving around. And I'll be serious with you and you, you should take a lot of responsibility for that. It's nice not getting calls and emails like we did previously. I don't think I really got any complaints and, and you've made a difference. So I just want to wish you well. I know you won't go away. I mean that in a sincere way and knowing that even when you, before you became back into office, you were very helpful to me as the mayor and let me know what's going on, what I should be doing sometimes. And we've had our differences, no question about it, but we've always remained friends. And at the end of the day, which is important. And you should be proud of your accomplishments and, and I'm proud of you. So I think there's a lot of people here in Cedar, so proud of you. So, so just read these again and Tracy O'Connell Novick, dedication service to the student staff community of the Worcester, while serving the Worcester School Committee from 2010 to 2015 and 22 to 2023. And that's behalf of the administration, the students and the community that you represent the Worcester Public Schools. And also we have a plaque, school committee member Tracy O'Connell Novick, present an honor of your dedicated service as Chair of the Standing Committee of Finance and Operations. I know you're very proud of that. And, and for your commitment to the students and families of the Worcester Public Schools.
Member Mailman?
Of course, I've known, the rest of us have known of Tracy for many years and won before I had a chance to get to know her as a colleague on the Worcester School Committee. All of what I thought is true. She is passionate, she is knowledgeable, she rarely backs down, and she is rarely incorrect. Not because I'm not rare. What I know of Tracy is way more important. She is incredibly generous with her time and knowledge and she teaches in a positive spirit. Really wanting to understand what she's trying to accomplish. Very sorry that she was not reelected as I see it as a loss for the brand new school committee that rose down from the bottom. I also really, Tracy is a softie. I think that might surprise me. Tracy has a hearty laugh and an eye for a little city, so welcome present in life. And I will minister upon day as your boss. I'm grateful to have gotten to know her. Oh, shoot. No, you couldn't hear what I said? Okay, okay. I'm grateful to have gotten to know her and now know that her statewide presence in all things K-12 has been an asset to our school committee and the state and will continue to be an asset to the district. Most recently, her work on transportation and her very valuable input on the superintendent search will pay dividends for years to come. Worcester's been lucky to have your service, Tracy. Who knows in what ways that will continue and you have my utmost respect and you have my friendship. Thank you.
Thank you.
Followed by Member Clancy and Member Kamara.
Thank you. And certainly some of the things that Member Mailman said are certainly true for me as well. I've known that since we began serving together when you got back on the committee, I have relied on you so much for so many procedural and policy type questions and support and certainly no more than when we did the superintendent search because I was honored to lead that, but to have both of you on the sub, both Member Kamara and Member O'Connell Novick on the standing committee, or I should say special committee with me, to be able to rely on your knowledge that you had from your work with MASC and other superintendent searches and how we could tie that into what we were doing here in Worcester was so truly beneficial for me. And certainly the many calls when I asked, wait, can I make this motion before this? Or how does this happen? Because we've been in so much transition over the last few years and different things happening and to be able to have your knowledge to rely on has been so helpful and supportive, I think for probably all of us who've had questions in those capacities. But I know it has been immensely helpful for me and I've learned so much. And you've also reminded me that I now need to really get better at making sure I remember all of it, but that I can still call you. So I will definitely be doing that and I appreciate so much the work you do with MASC because finally getting to go to an in-person conference in there and kind of see you even more so on your element was really rewarding to see that because that's you. You know, you know, you know what I mean? Like you, this is your background and that's where you hit your stride and it's so beneficial for the rest of us to learn from you. And as the mayor mentioned, you got into school committee because of your kids and buses and you didn't let that go. And I'm so happy that you didn't and I'm so happy that some of us got to take that vote to move to in-house transportation and support the work that you did with finance and operations to get that done. And to have in-house transportation has just been such a success for us and it's wonderful to see. And that is something, even though it's such a big thing, it's one of the many things that are part of your legacy here on the school committee. And, you know, Sue made a point of, you know, you rarely back down and that's not a bad thing because you don't back down in your position, but one of the things you also have always imparted on me is I know when I don't have the votes. So, you know, you might have your belief on something, but you also know it's not going to be, you, sometimes you just have to go to the next item, but that you can still be passionate about what you believe in. But reading the room is always important too. So I wish you all the best. I know this is not the last of you in advocating for the public school children in the city of Worcester and throughout the state. So thank you so much for your friendship as a colleague on this committee, the knowledge that you've been willing to share and that I know you will continue to share with all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Clancy?
Thank you. I honestly think this is harder for me to get through than my own. Tracy, I remember when you first ran, I think you announced right after I had and I was scared. I was like, oh no. Cause I, you were like, you know, I remember seeing you at the Nelson Place building meetings and, you know, that was my first thought. And we started four years ago, like you said, and like I said, world shut down. And I saw the work you did and the pivotal work that we did during that time, it was incredible. The knowledge you possess, the work that you do are unlike any other person that I know. Your passion is incredible. There are just so many things over the last four years that you have just been a catalyst for, transportation, numerous budget items, you know, helping with the superintendent search. There's just, there's so many things to name. And I am truly a better educator because of what I have learned from you. And I know this seems strange because I mean, people, you know, say it all the time, you have such a hard, you know, a hard demeanor and I, I don't, I, I've seen a totally different side of you. You're such a caring person. You know, you know, you call, you check in on people and, and I think your passion, you know, I just think it, it's truly your passion and I think you have very strong opinions, but I envy the way that you stick to your guns and that you can, you know, really get things done. And I, you know, I, as a parent, I, this is such a huge loss for us, for the city, for our students, because you, you were good and I'm sad to see you leave. You know, like I said, I think it's more of a loss than even me not being on the committee. I truly believe that. And I, you know, and I, like again, I consider you a friend and I am just so grateful to have really gotten to know the true Tracy Novick. Thank you.
Thank you. So I also want to echo Member Mailman's sentiment about like, before I got on the school committee, I, I met you here and there, but I didn't really know of you. But over the last two years, it's been a pleasure working with you. And it is, I know you like, but it is because I appreciate structure. I appreciate like people having the ability to, you know, have clarity in what they're doing and provide that clarity for other people. Because the blind cannot lead the blind. I'm so, so sorry if anyone is a blind here, but I'm sorry. Okay, so like, yes, you need people who are going to come and do the, you know, show and do the work and like, that's what it is for FNO. Like I was so happy when I learned that whatever we were going to be doing with regards to funding and budget, that we were going to be visiting the boilers and the schools and the, and the, the transportation department and seeing the buses. I was like, what? And it was just so incredible. And it was, it was really remarkable, incredible because that allowed me to grow as a new member. It really did. And because you can say things in theory, but to actually see it in practical, it's very more, I think it's even more important. And that's what you did and I'm really appreciative of that. And all of the, the knowledge that you imported with regards of the finance and sometimes I'm like, wow, that's like really remarkable, even though I know that's what you do for a work, but still like it's very remarkable. Also, I know like the first few months with, along with Ellen, like you, one of the new folks that came in, you, you know, helped to ensure that we understood like here is, here is this, here is that, like this is what you have to know. Like again, because I appreciate that. I don't like to come into places where I'm like, okay, like what it is, I need to know like here is what before time, you know? So like those were very appreciative. And when we had that meet, the training in December, I was so happy. I was like, yes, we're getting, you know, trained, even though like you will experience it and that will become a training in of its own. But to have known that that was something that was available to us and I learned that in the past, only very few school committee members like actually went to the training. I was like, what? This is amazing. So I'm, I'm really happy for that because the fact that, as the folks would say, like you're hardcore, that actually helps, helped me grow and understand the things that I didn't. And I know there are some items that some of, sometimes I was just like, what? That we didn't agree on, but I still really appreciate it because in order for you to grow, you need to have other people who can challenge you. That's the only growth that is great. So I appreciate that and I hope to continue to see you and hopefully we will work in other lines in the city or anywhere else. So thank you so much for that.
David Johnson?
I keep this short. You, you didn't want this anyway, right? And that's, that's a bob cut? Is that? That looks good. So when, when I first ran, you know, I, tons of people would say to me, if, if you get on, there's, there's, there's no way you could work with Tracy. You, you, you and Tracy are just totally opposite and it, it's just not going to work. I'm going to sit here and tell you guys that, that is not true. I, I'm going to tell you that I think I probably spent hours on the phone with you over two years and, and, and the, the help that you gave me and kind of getting me through these two years and, and really actually getting me the past couple of months when I kept telling you I was gonna, you know? But I know. I mean, the work that you have done and I always said like, you know, my email, my phone would go off at five thirty, six o'clock in the morning and I'll be like, does she ever sleep? Like, does it ever stop? Like, when does she shut it off? And like, that's amazing. Like, but that's you, that's your passion, that's what you love to do. And I, I'm telling you, I, I'm going to miss sitting next to you. I mean, this has been a great two years and, and to get to know you and it's your moral compass for me. It's your, you know, you're very, very ethical and, and I love the fact that you love process and, and, and policy and kind of like that, 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 that's very interesting to me and I, and I, and I wish a lot of people were like that and that, that's what I truly admire about you. And again, and just like all my colleagues here, I, I mean, I walked into this to be on a committee to do the right things for the kids in the district and I believe we've done that as a team. I think this was a great team. And I'm hoping one day we could actually run this back again and do this all over again because it's been one of the greatest experiences for me and you're, you're all going to be missed. And, and again, I would also say this, that, you know, we work together and we could call each other colleagues, but I, I am walking away today, Tracy, calling you my friend because I truly, truly appreciate it, what you have done for me, what you have done for this district, what you have done for the kids and the hard work that you put in is really, really appreciated and thank you for your service.
Yeah, you're right. I, this is, this is not why I do this, right? So the, the, and I certainly don't do it to, to listen to people talk about me. But I, I want to echo what the vice chair has said a number of times this evening, which is that this committee showed that it could be done. And there were a lot of things that people said that, whether it was the school committee, whether it was Worcester, whether it was the Worcester Public Schools, it couldn't be done. We couldn't do a national superintendent search, certainly not a successful one. I will echo my colleagues in saying probably the longest day of my life was the day of your interview because I spent the whole day on pins and needles going, come on, come on, come on, everybody really has to like her as much as I do. I couldn't really say that because that would be deliberating outside of a session and y'all know I would never have done that. I was of course privileged to be the one who actually got to meet Dr. Menares in person and then really literally had to come back and not say anything for a couple of days. But we showed that we could be successful in doing that. And I also, I want to note that that wasn't only about process, that was also about Worcester can be the kind of place and the Worcester Public Schools can be the kind of place where someone might actually want to come here from Southern California to lead our district. And that matters to the rest of us, I think too, right? We can take transportation in-house, even though people say that we're not a transportation agency and we can't actually save the money and we're not going to be able to make it work with the drivers. And I stopped by Transportation earlier this week when they were having a gathering and that's just the happiest, it's not the happiest place on earth, but I'd have to, to put a TM next to that and Mr. Allen would yell at me. But it, it's such a, it's such a happy place to work. And I, once again this week, recommended to somebody that they were looking And I told them earlier this week that I'm not going to stop doing that just because I'm not on the school committee. But yeah, my kid gets on a morning light this morning when it's freezing cold and I personally stood on the MBTA platform waiting for a train that didn't come. My kid got picked up by a boss. And that's a confidence that every parent now has. We can do a full reform of policy and look at every single one of our policies and manage to test the mayor's patience in doing so because we know that the whole like, let's talk about language is not really his happy place. And fix it and get the references right and all of those kinds of things and get ourselves to a place where we can actually have, as we did, and I gotta commend my colleagues for that emergency meeting we basically had yesterday of like, this is section D, we need the references, we need the cross-references, can we look at the sentences? Okay, we're good, we're done. That's amazing, please don't lose that. We can have a working partnership with our union, which is huge for a city of this size. We don't have to always be like going to grievances, we don't always be having to, like, we can actually just sort of like have people sit across the table and say, what's the issue and how do we fix it and how do we actually just make it work? Which is the point, right? Like, that's what we're supposed to be doing here. And, I mean, I, I do want to say that I really appreciate that Transportation pushed to allow me to sign the contract tonight. That does genuinely mean a lot to me, but that's not the only place where those relationships are happening and that's huge. And I say that not only on, as a school committee member, but also as a former teacher. Like, to just sort of get it fixed is really the, the struggle. And also, we can have a school committee that does its job. And I've mentioned to both you, Mr. Chair, and also to the superintendent in the last week or so, the thing that haunts my memory, if you're wondering what I'm thinking about at 2:00 AM, it's actually this, which is the 2017 Comprehensive District Review and we are now overdue for Desi to come back. So that's the thing that's haunting my memory. And one of the things that they said, when they came in, was their first critique was actually of the school committee. And it was because the school committee wasn't actually doing its job. And, you know, I'm a little dubious on how well Desi knows what school committees do, but what they said was, there were many motions requesting information and few motions by members are aligned with district leaders' priorities for improving teaching and learning. And that is actually supposed to be your job. And so if there's anything that I've been striving for for the past four years, as you know, Mr. Chair, because Jack Foley and I met with you almost as soon as I got reelected, it's been to make sure that when Desi comes back in, that they can't say that about the Worcester School Committee. Now, I have no say over that in another week and a half. And so my challenge for those of you who are still going to be here in January is this: don't let the rest of us down. Don't let the work that we have done during this term go away and go to waste and be sort of steep away over time because it's exhausting and you have to continue to defend it. The focus on district governance, on good process, on policies that are what they should be, on questions of purview. What is the job of the school committee versus what's the job of the administration? On making sure, because they're sure as heck going to look at it because they counted last time, that the agenda is actually items that are under the school committee's purview and what they're actually supposed to be spending time on. Please don't let us down. Please don't let, not just us that are leaving down, don't let this administration down. They deserve better than that. Don't let our staff down because they deserve a school committee that's focused on governance. Don't let our families down because if you get scattered like that, then nobody's driving the ship. Because at the end of the day, if you, if you let that focus slip, if you get off course, and of course, this is the lesson of the, the first book that the superintendent had the district administration read together, is if the school committee loses focus and loses that and slips that, ultimately, it's the kids who are going to suffer. So my challenge for you tonight is to not let us down. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We'll go back to our agenda before we go back to this, to held, the held items. Probably should do, I don't know, is, is Ms. Miller here too? Okay. Oh, Counselor, Counselor, remember, remember Johnson? If you don't mind, we'll go up to the petition and we'll come back to open comment. But request that the school committee to request a state audit of the Dory Memorial High School MSBA application to address the fraud and the illegal building of the public school on historic protected parkland. Ms. Miller, give your names to your residents.
Hi, my name is Carleen Miller. I'm at 23 Jermaine Street and I'm talking on item J, the public petition. I stand before members of the Worcester School Committee to ask you to make a choice. Will members choose to request an audit of the Dory Memorial High School MSBA project application, or will you choose to ignore my requests and allow the application based on false and fraudulent information, which greenlit the $320 million project using city and state funds to become part of the historical record which now bears your stamp of complicity? I could stand here for hours and present the historical government and legal documents that demonstrate the purchase and intent of use of Newton Hill at Elm Park, but instead provided information to all of you by email. Newton Hill, the location of Dory Memorial High School, is public parkland. Newton Hill was purchased and protected explicitly for the purpose of being public parkland forever. And it was added to Elm Park, Worcester's oldest and most celebrated public park. Yes, there was a lawsuit pertaining to this topic that was dismissed. None of the three courts where this lawsuit's claims were submitted, reviewed, or ruled directly on our claims. Most importantly, the missing legal documentation demonstrating that land at Newton Hill was deemed park surplus and transferred to the school department. Which leads us to the key question, how can members responsible for the supervision of the Worcester Public Schools and therefore student school properties allow a $320 million school project be built on land that was and is legally still protected public parkland? The schools being built, your choice today doesn't change that. Your choice today is about the integrity of the MSBA application and its foundational information, false and fraudulent. Where will you stand on the historic record? Thank you.
Thank you. And appreciate your passion and I just have a paragraph by the law department and it said, "The allegation is meritless and that this period court held that the city did not submit incomplete information to the Massachusetts Supreme Court in 1960, when the SEC approved the change in the use of 20 acres of land from the park purposes to school purposes. This period court dismissed the lawsuit in its earliest stage, creating the city's motion to dismiss for fear of the stated claim upon which relief could be granted. In other words, there was no legal merit to the lawsuit. Following the trial court's dismiss for the lawsuit, the plaintiff filed an appeal with the Massachusetts Appeals Court. The appeal was denied and a subsequent request for further appellate review by the Superior District Court was similarly denied." So I guess the motion will be to file. And all those in favor? Opposed? So, audit. Okay. So we'll go back to public comment. Anybody here want to speak on anything? Give your name and see your residents.
Hi, I'm Melissa Verdiere. I live at 37 Dixfield Road in Worcester and I'm the EAW president. So through the chair, I just wanted to address the school committee and say that the last year of my life has been a complete whirlwind. Becoming president during the middle of contract negotiations was, was quite interesting. But we've had our ups and downs. We didn't always get along. We didn't always like the decisions we made, but we got it done. And I think that we have something to be proud of and I can tell you, from what I hear from every MTA meeting I go to after this, we have made Worcester a beacon and that's what we should be. And I continue, I want to continue to do this work. And so for Member Clancy and Member Kamara and Member O'Connell Novick, it has been a pleasure. I truly wish you the best of luck and I hope to see you back. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. We are going to go now to the held item, from here to anywhere, to get a strategic plan update and motions to accept and to file. If we have any questions or updates or anything? So motions to accept or roll call?
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Millman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member O'Connell Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Then we'll take the city approval of demands for the governance and employee issues meetings held on, I'll come back in a second. Let's just do the contracts that we did in executive session. Pursuant to action taken in executive session was moved to ratify a memorandum agreement between the Worcester School Committee Education Association of Worcester on behalf of the aides of the physically handicapped bus monitors and bus drivers for the period July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2026. In pursuit of the action taken, okay, we'll do that one right now. Roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Millman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member O'Connell Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Next is pursuant to actions taken in executive session was moved to ratify a memorandum agreement between the Worcester School Committee Education Association of Worcester on behalf of the aides of the physically handicapped bus monitors and bus drivers for the period July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2026. In pursuit of the action taken, okay, we'll do that one right now. Roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Millman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member O'Connell Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Next is pursuant to actions taken in executive session was moved to ratify a memorandum agreement between the Worcester School Committee and EEW on behalf of the therapy assistance for the period July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2026. Roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Millman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member O'Connell Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. The motion now is execute the contract from point between the Worcester School Committee and Dr. Q for the position of Assistant Superintendent for Personnel Engagement Equity for the period July 1st, 2024 to June 30th, 2027. Assistant Superintendent Personnel Engagement Equity is, contract consists of, contract term of January 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2027. Extension of one year on July 1st of each year unless the school committee exercises the right not to extend. Compensation starts at $220,000, $220,800 and raises the same as non-steps in subsequent fiscal years. Full-time and full-year, this is a full-time or full-year position, 15 sick days cumulative to 200. Sick leave buyback or severance benefits if meet requirements. Non-union sick bank, extended illness leave, bereavement and other customary leave of absences. Three personal days, 25 vacation days with buyback and unused days, holidays observed by the Worcester Public Schools, termination for good cause or termination by Assistant Superintendent with 90 days notice and also an annuity. So, we'll do a roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Millman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member O'Connell Novick?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. So we're going to take a motion on all three collectively on reconsideration. So the first motion will be to take a vote to reconsider. So, roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Millman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member O'Connell Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Motion to reconsider. Roll call.
Member Clancy?
No.
Member Johnson?
No.
Member Kamara?
No.
Member Millman?
No.
Member McCullough?
No.
Member O'Connell Novick?
No.
Mayor Petty?
A no. Okay. Congratulations, Dr. Q. Next is to consider the approval of demands for the governance employee issues meeting held on November 21st, 2023. Motion to approve and to file. Member Clancy?
So yes, the Standing Committee on Governance met on November 21st and it was called to order at 4:30. President was myself, Member Johnson and Member McCullough. And from the administration, also present in the meeting were Members Millman and Members O'Connell Novick and Deputy Superintendent Allen and interim clerk, David Rashford. The first item that we took was to look at the exception of the donation from the Gene Haas Foundation and the recommendation from administration was to hold that item in standing committee and then on roll call of three to zero, the item was held. And then the next item that we took up were the rules for the upcoming school committee. And so we went through, the members, we received a copy from Deputy Superintendent Allen with recommendations, additions, deletions and any updates on the rules. We went through page by page and we reviewed the proposed changes and Member McCullough suggested 11 changes to the rules and I suggested two changes to the rules. Member Johnson asked for some clarification. And on a roll call, I made a motion to approve the changes of the rules of the new school committee effective for January 2nd, 2024. And on a roll call of three to zero, those were passed. I am looking to make a couple of motions on these rules tonight. For example, I would like to make a motion on rule number six, which would be to add, "Any chosen vice chair must have attended the Massachusetts School Committee charting the course training to be eligible for vice chair." I believe that might say that. And then the other one is looking at changing number 39. And it will be to remove, "All chairs and vice chairs must have attended the Massachusetts School Committees charting, charting the course training prior to their assignment." And I would like to make a motion that we change it to, "All standing committees, chairs and vice chairs must take the MASE charting the course within 90 days of the assignment or be subject to removal by the chair. Each school committee member shall serve on no less than one standing committee." And those are my motions.
What number was that?
That was number 39.
Member McCullough?
Thank you. I also had some motions that I wanted to make or amendments, I guess I should say, some motion, amendments in the form of motions. Excuse me, on line, on number nine, item number nine, I did have a, I would suggest that the line, "Any request requiring reporting beyond information already available must be filed as an item and passed by the full committee to be fulfilled," be moved up in the paragraph. I believe it seemed a little out of place. I could be wrong about that, but I think that should be moved to below. In those situations where the definition of routine is in question, that issue may be resolved by the superintendent and then that section should be following there. And I'm happy to provide all of this to the clerk's office that I had typed up here. And then, my suggestion would be the section that was in there in purple, be revised to, "School committee members may attend school events during the school day when invited by school staff in conjunction with school-based leadership and should notify the superintendent or executive directors of any other visits to individual schools that have been coordinated with school-based leadership. School committee members acting in the capacity of parent slash guardian or vendor associated with the schools need not notify executive directors or superintendents when acting in this capacity." So that's on line number nine. And then on number 13, where it says, "The chair or vice chair can set the meeting to a different time." I had, my motion would be to remove the vice chair and leave it as the chair. And then, I'm sorry, I just have one or two more because apparently I didn't realize I had 11 in the subcommittee meeting until that was stated. I guess I have a lot of thoughts on this. Okay, you already did that. Oh, and then on section 40, it was more of a, just a change, it's on the last sentence, it should say, "Will be referred to the Standing Committee on Finance, Operations and Governance." I think it still had finance, I think it still had governance and employee issues there. So it needed to be adjusted on that last line. And I'm trying to think, I might have, what? Oh, I'm sorry, did I read it in the wrong number? Oh, oh, sorry, number 16, it's missing the word attire. And then, I promise this is my last one. Number 50, I had proposed this rule, I'm sorry, I'm just talking, I proposed this rule and I just changed it to be clearer, so this is my motion on this. "The chair slash vice chair shall be the ones to seek official legal opinions on any item. These requests can come on behalf of a school committee member through the chair slash vice chair. This does not preclude individual members from contacting the school committee attorney." So those are my motions that I'm putting forward, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Member Novick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just would note as a point of procedure that what we are doing this evening is we are amending policy. As such, under our current rule, and honestly, the rule continuing forward, any motion has to be passed by a two-thirds majority, which is six votes. I have two edits, and then, well, let me first note this. I rise in opposition to the two edits that are proposed by Member Clancy. I think it is absolutely incumbent that leadership walk in having already been trained. And I think that we devalue, this is actually exactly what I was talking about, I think that we devalue the importance of governance and the professional development of school committee members by deleting that. So, I oppose the amendment that was made to rule four, we need to keep prior. And I oppose the amendment that is proposed.
Which one was that facing?
The prior, that's being, that was being proposed to be deleted out of rule four. And I also would oppose the amendment that 90 days be given. What I would accept in, to potentially address, potentially what may be considered an issue in rule 39, is I would accept deleting and vice chairs from rule 39. Vice chairs for standing committees are a fairly recent convention of the Worcester School Committee, and largely were, were not done for procedural reasons. So, I will oppose the 90 days in rule 39. I will oppose the prior, the deletion of prior in rule six. Two edits that I will offer, and these are genuinely edits, I have, I noted the attire question. If the committee does not intend to have a voiced second, it is important for the committee to include, in rule, in rule 37, the school committee needs to specify that it is the rules of parliamentary procedure laid down in Robert's Rules of Order for Small Bodies. Otherwise, we will be creating rules that require a voiced second. I don't have an opinion one way or the other, but we need to make sure the rules are correct on that. And then, the other amendment, and this is an amendment that is, oh, the other thing we need to do is we actually need to make sure this is labeled as policy BBA-E, which is where our rules are. But those are both edits. The one that's substantive is this, Mr. Chair. And I offer this, as I hope you know, not out of any animus to either you personally or to the position of the chair. Rule 25, we've deliberately set up a process that is very much a process for putting an item on the agenda. And it requires that standards be met, that, first of all, put it under school committee purview, and then that also go through the process of the discussion between the vice chair and the superintendent as to whether or not an item is timely or would be better put on a different agenda. To allow a simple phone call to a chair over a weekend to simply add an item to agenda is to essentially drive a truck straight through that. We will absolutely undermine the integrity of the process, that preservation of making sure that the agenda only has the items that need to be on it. And so, the language that I would propose for, for rule 25, and I want to note, by the way, that the item that was referred to governance was actually the original item proposed and not the amended version that we gave them, is, I would say, the following. The vice chair, in consultation with the superintendent, and then continue the item, may approve an item after the Wednesday deadline and prior to the 48 posting requirement of a meeting to be added to the agenda. If the vice chair so deemed, determines that it was impossible for the member to file prior to the deadline, determines that it is time-sensitive, and that it otherwise meets the restrictions of rule 26. And rule 26 is the one that actually outlines how things work. So, in other words, it would say that someone can, yes, contact the vice chair, who then would contact the superintendent. They would make sure that it actually met all of the usual standards, and also that someone can't just do that because they forgot or missed the deadline, and also that they can't just wait till the next meeting. And again, Mr. Chair, I do that entirely out of concern for this committee's process going forward, and frankly, for, out of concern for what your phone may do on weekends if we allow that to simply roll forward as a phone call being enough to get an item on an agenda. But as I said, I will oppose the limitations of governance. I think that that's actually really crucial, particularly for a committee that will have as many new members as the incoming committee will. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, remember it's six votes, it fails. We'll go back to what we have. Okay. So, we will take, I think we should take, I'm trying to think, we should do the amendments separately. Let's maybe take Member Novick's amendments, which is, first one was rule six, use the word prior, so that's a yes or a no.
So, just to clarify, the original amendment was to delete the word prior?
Delete the word prior.
Okay. So, we're voting on that?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Not supposed, isn't it? She wants to delete it. Okay, we should go in order then. Let's go with the, yeah, we'll go in as the motions is presented by.
Number six is fine.
Okay, the first motion then, I think, is to accept, accept the rules as they are, as amended, from Member Clancy, and Member McCullough, unless you want to do everything separately.
So, through the chair, can I just, when I, when I went back and I looked at it, number six is fine. There should be no changes to number six. I'm withdrawing number six, but I am changing the motion on number 30, sorry, 39. That one was, so it, so I'm withdrawing the motion for rule number six. That one is fine. So, it will just be the changes to number 39, is my motion.
What did you change? I'm sorry.
Just rule number 39. I'm gonna take out that I wanted to make a change to rule number six, because when I went back and looked at my notes and the prior changes that we made, it was fine. So, that was an error on my behalf when I mentioned that earlier. Number six is fine. I'm just looking to make, the change I would like to make is for rule number 39, and the motion is to change it to, "All standing committee chairs and vice chairs must take Massachusetts charting the course within 90 days of the assignment, or be subject to removal by the chair, and each school committee member shall serve on no less than one standing committee."
What did you change from what you just amended before?
So, it was, prior to that, it was, it had in there, "All chairs and vice chairs must have attended the Massachusetts School Committees charting the course training prior to their assignment." So, this is giving a time assignment for them.
Oh, 90 days.
To get it done, yes.
Okay. So, I guess the motion would be to, first motion is to take the item as is, as amended by councilor, by Councilor, School Committee Member Clancy and Mary McCullough. Roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Is this on 39? I'm sorry.
No, this is on the whole, the whole rules.
The whole thing?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
The whole thing?
Something confusing. Has everybody else said what we're voting on? No? No?
You're saying, I'm sorry, Vice Chair?
Yeah, what's that?
I guess my confusion is the whole thing that she said, but there was different additions, so.
Yeah. You want to do one at a time? It takes some time.
Why don't we?
What's that?
If I'm, if I'm understanding you correctly, Mr. Chair, what you're asking us to do is you're asking us to essentially approve Laura's report with the single amendment that she then is bringing forward, correct? Which would be, the rules as written here with the one additional change that the training has to have been done within 90 days, or the person is subject to removal by the chair, right? That's what you're saying, is you want us to approve every, all of the rest of the changes that came through in the report, plus that addition that Laura just made, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's the motion that we're voting up or down?
It's motion is to take the rules as amended tonight.
So, that's all?
Yes. Yeah, yeah. Member Kamara?
Thank you. So, that's a bit, what's it called? Yeah, right. That's a bit unclear for me. So, like, so they both made different edits.
Correct.
But we're saying yes to combine revisions.
Those two. The edits made by Member McCullough and Member Clancy, correct.
Right, because, okay.
What's that?
I think just as a point of order, Mr. Chair, the chair presenting the report and asking us to adopt her report with her own amendments is one thing. I think, I do think that procedurally, we probably need to vote Member McCullough's amendment separately.
We can do that. We don't have to, but we can. Okay. So, roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
I guess no. No to the.
Okay, just to be clear, we're voting just the Member Clancy's amendment, then we're gonna go to the Member McCullough's afterwards.
Right, but we're doing 39.
Yes.
Right, correct. Right, so no.
Okay.
Member Mailman?
No.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member O'Connell Novick?
No.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. What's that? That fails?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So, this whole thing's gonna fail tonight. Okay, Member McCullough? Your amendment?
Do you need me to re-say them again?
I think so.
All right, okay. So, the amendments, or motions for amendments that I made are on number nine, "To move any requests requiring reporting beyond information already available must be filed as an item and passed by the full committee to be filled above the amended section that I'm proposing. School committee members may attend school events during the school day when invited by the school staff in conjunction with the school-based leadership, and should notify the superintendent or executive directors of any other visits to individual schools that have been coordinated with school-based leadership. School committee members acting in the capacity of parent/guardian or vendor associated with the schools need not notify executive directors or superintendents when acting in this capacity." Then, in line 13, it was to remove vice, the vice chair after the chair can set. And then, number 16 was to add the word attire in between professional and to meetings. I think that was just missing in the notes. It wasn't that it wasn't said. And then, oh, and I'm sorry, I do greatly apologize. I had missed one, so I'm glad that I'm going back to this. In line number 21, and I believe procedurally this would be corrected, it said, "Shall be reconsidered act upon within two weeks of the date." And I was proposing that we add, "Or the next regular meeting, whichever comes first." And if somebody sees an error with that, please certainly let me know. But it seemed that the week, it might not be, the meeting might not be two weeks later, or you might have a regular meeting sooner because of the way our calendar works. So, it seemed to make sense that it would say, "Within two weeks or of the date, or the next regular meeting, whichever comes first." And then, on section 40, the last sentence, it should say, "Finance, Operations, and Governance." And then, number 50, I'm proposing an adjustment to my original addition, "The chair/vice chair shall be the ones to seek official legal opinions on any item. These requests can come on the behalf, can come on behalf of school committee members through the chair/vice chair. This does not preclude individual members from contacting the school committee attorney." And I believe those are all of my requests. Thank you.
Okay. So, we take on a roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member O'Connell Novick?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. Then we have Member Novick's motions.
Mr. Chair, may, may I suggest that you may want to take them separately? Because I think that there's a couple that are potentially just edits, whereas others may be ones that people want to consider separately.
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
So, so can I suggest that, I mean, the edits are to add, to simply add the actual coding BBA-E to the, to the item, and, is that it? Oh, and then to add, on rule 37, to add, for small bodies, to Robert's Rules of Order. And then, the other ones were, are actually substantive, so I'd make those separately. I'm gonna take those two first.
Take those two collectively. Roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member O'Connell Novick?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes.
Okay.
So, then, the amendment that I made to rule 25 would actually send amendments to the agenda through the same process as any other item, and also add that it needs to be both impossible to file prior to the deadline, and determined, as well as determined to be time-sensitive, and meet all of the structures of rule 26.
Okay, roll call.
Member Clancy?
I'm sorry, the only one, so.
Thank you. And I just want to clarify, but you're also changing it from the chair to the vice chair with administration, not the chair.
Correct, because that would be putting it through the same process.
I'm sorry, roll call.
Member Clancy?
No.
Vice Chair Johnson?
No.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
No.
Member O'Connell Novick?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
No. That fails.
And then, in order to potentially sort out what might be going on, for lack of any other information, with rule 39, rather than the amendment that was made earlier, I would suggest that we simply delete from line two the words "and vice chairs," which would make the restriction incumbent on chairs of the standing committees, the two individuals who are going to be the chairs of the standing committees, rather than anyone else.
What did I say?
She's saying that we say, or just remove again the vice chair, so it's just the chairs that are required.
Does everybody understand? So, it's basically just taking the word vice chair out and leaving chair, correct, for the, for taking that course. Okay. Roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson? Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member O'Connell Novick?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
No.
Was the result of the vote?
Five to two.
Five to two.
In favor.
Okay. Any more do we have? Amendment to me? I think that was all of them, right? Was that the last amendment you had, or? I just don't remember.
That is the last amendment that I had, yes.
Rule six was, she already took care of that. Okay. Okay. We'll take a vote on the rules.
We, the problem, Mr. Chair, point of order, as things stand, we don't actually have language that we've agreed to on rule 39, because we have not, there's, there is no language that six members have actually voted in favor of on rule 39.
Originally, it's five members.
No, we need six members in order to amend policy, which is what we're doing this evening.
I thought it was two-thirds.
Beg your pardon?
Two-thirds vote.
Two-thirds vote of a seven.
It's five. It's five.
All right, in which case, so in which case, we have language agreed on 39 for the deletion of vice chair. I'm sorry. Okay, fair enough. Then, I think we can proceed. Thank you.
We're not gonna argue on the six, because. Okay. Okay. So, we'll take this collectively as amended. Roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member O'Connell Novick?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Okay. Okay. So, maybe we can get a copy of this sent to us, not like tomorrow, but anyway, but.
Do you want to vote reconsideration on this, Mr. Chair?
Give the reconsideration. Oh, we should take a vote to reconsider?
Yes.
Roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman? Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member O'Connell Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Roll call.
Member Clancy?
No.
Vice Chair Johnson?
No.
Member Kamara?
No.
Yes or no?
No, I guess.
Okay.
Member Mailman?
No.
Member McCullough?
No.
Member O'Connell Novick?
No.
Mayor Petty?
No.
Okay. We are going back to the agenda. Okay, we are on the superintendent's report. We already passed that, so we did this, we did the public comment, we did the recognitions. Public petition reported superintendent on the mid-cycle review twenty-twenty-three.
Through the chair, so as the team comes up to get themselves seated, I do want to commend my student representatives who are here this evening. I know that one, I think he left already, so that's too bad. But your, what you filed tonight and your advocacy on behalf of your peers is really commendable. And I continue to say how much, when I spend time with all of you, with the students of Worcester Public Schools, how excited I am for the future. Because you are, you're so much further along than youth in my age, at your age. So, keep it up. We're really proud of you, and we listen. And, and we will do our due diligence to make it happen. May not happen all at once, but we will keep working on it, so thank you. So, committee, I'm not quite sure where you ended on those rules, but that's okay. We'll figure it out. Good thing we have video to go back to. I want to, again, thank the team for this presentation this evening. We really spent a lot of time trying to make sure that what we shared with you was not too much, because there has been a lot going on in Worcester Public Schools this school year, but enough to show you that we have been really working through the goals that were set collaboratively in August. And so what you'll hear tonight are just snippets of and big picture pieces of data, both quantitative and qualitative. So just a reminder, quantitative, I like to think of those as the numbers, right? So that might be some assessment data that we might have, or in terms of our HR goal, the actual number of people hired, percentages, things like that. But at this time of the school year, a lot of the data is also qualitative. So anecdotally, what do we hear from people? What do we feel when we go to schools? That's just as important as part of the formative work to let us know, are we on track? And do we need to make any changes? So you'll hear both a combination from the different members on quantitative and qualitative data. And then I also want to, because we spend a lot of time talking about this, so even the purpose of data, so quantitative, qualitative, those are the types of data. But then the purpose of data, there's both implementation data and impact data. Implementation is what we're really collecting right now. How well are we implementing what we've put in place? How might we need to adjust so that we get the impact data, which is the other type of data? The other purpose of data, what's the impact on outcomes for children? So you're gonna hear a bit more on implementation tonight than you will hear on impact. But we have some good news to share on the impact data as well. So, before I go too deep into this, next slide, who's running the slides tonight? Oh, it's Casey. Okay, so two outcomes tonight. You're gonna hear a status update on the goals that, again, were established in August of this school year. And then provide some feedback or ask any questions to clarify next steps. And before I go any further, I also want to recognize the Worcester Public Schools team members that have been waiting so diligently. We've got some principals to speak on behalf of this work. We've got some directors, we've got a variety of people. So, thank you for coming, probably the first night of your vacation, to, to get a sense. So that's what, that's what we're working on tonight. Next slide. So Cabinet spent a lot of time really talking about where we are in preparation for this presentation, and are we on the right track? And we are committed to staying the course. Because we know what we established at the beginning of this school year in terms of goals was grounded in the data of the district and where we were at, at that time, what I had gathered during my listening and learning tour, and, and what we had started with our, our principals and our staff. So we stay committed to staying the course. And what I'm going to run through in the next few slides is the course. So if you're wondering, so what's this course? I'm gonna keep, I'm gonna take you through that. But the goal at the end of this, this road right here is the vision of a learner, that's, and actualizing that. Vision of a learner, of course, is aspirational and it is future-based, because there's a lot of work behind that. But we know that we must begin with our leaders and really giving them the tools and the, the knowledge so that they can lead this work at their schools with their staff. So the next slide starts to, just as a reminder, here is our vision of a learner. You did adopt this as the vision for the district when it comes to what we want for our scholars as they graduate. Behind each one of these dispositions, there is layers of work. And this doesn't just happen at our high school level. We are committed to the vision of a learner, starting in our preschool settings and moving them up. Now, are we there? Not by any means. But have we started the work? We absolutely have. WaWicke's Academy, our, WaWicke's Road School is where we're starting to really deepen this work, and then we're gonna be taking it district-wide through time. But this is instrumental to that strategic plan that you just passed and accepted this evening. This is our, this is part of the road, so we want this for our children. Next slide then talks about, all right, so in order to have a vision of a learner and have it in, actually in place, then that means each and every day in their classroom, children need to have learning experiences that reflect these three areas. They need to have opportunity to show self-leadership, like what we see in the students who come here representing their student body. They need to work on both academic and cognitive skills, and that's not something new. But they also need interpersonal skills. And the more and more we speak with employers, workforce, any recent research that you read on educational outcomes for children, the interpersonal skills are instrumental in their success in the future. We will teach them how to read and write and do basic math. The self-leadership and interpersonal, that really then has implications for how they can be nimble and ready for whatever life throws at them upon graduation. So part of this road of acquire or being, making sure our children are practicing the vision of a learner are the learning experiences that happen in the classroom each and every day. Again, we're not there yet, but I do see evidence of this in our classrooms throughout our district. Is it every day, every single classroom? No, but will we work at this each and every day? We absolutely will. Next slide then talks about, so if this is what our children need to experience each and every day, now what's the adult culture need to look like? And these are the mindsets that we're saying we need to keep working as, at, as an adult culture. We need to have authentic engagement with each other, with our community, across our schools. Authentic engagement is essential to ensuring that each and every classroom has those learning experiences. We need to create schools and a district where a sense of belonging is felt by anybody and everybody who walks through those, those doors. And we need to honor knowledge and build capacity so that our leaders, our educators, our support staff, people who work at the district office, that we can and act in a way that practices sense of belonging and authentic engagement. As a district, the leadership team, we've started digging into, when I say authentic engagement, what does that mean? Because we need to have common understanding. So we've got some work groups going right now where we're really starting to operationalize authentic engagement, sense of belonging, and building capacity and honoring knowledge. But what we know about school districts that succeed, what Karen Chenoweth's work that Member Novick mentioned, is that it is what the adults do each and every day that makes the difference for the children. Children will rise to the occasion. It's how we work with each other, and it starts with how we see our work and our interactions with each other. So this is what the adults need to do, and we're working with our principals on finding, you know, making this happen, and not just our principals, our directors as well. Next slide then, and again, this is the course. The final part of this course is what we do at the district level. So there are systems and conditions that we must put in place at the district level so that those mindsets are permeating throughout the organization so that the classroom educators, support staff can provide learning experiences that our children need so that they can demonstrate the vision of a learner. And it is around leadership development and a culture of continuous learning. We are not perfect, we never will be, but we will keep working at it and get better at things. Shared accountability so that our schools don't feel like they're in this work by themselves. Our Q teams have been instrumental in this work this year, and we're just getting started. And then finally, making sure that we allocate resources so that schools have what they need to, again, offer those learning experiences for our scholars so that they can actualize the vision of a learner. And so tonight, oh, I thought I was changing the slide. Next slide then pulls it all together. So the center of the work is about the vision of a learner. We wrap around the adult mindsets of sense of belonging, authentic engagement, building capacity and honoring knowledge to ensure the vision of a learner takes place in our schools and our classrooms. And the district office supports it through the human systems of leadership development and continuous learning and the shared, the organizational systems of shared accountability and resource allocation. Again, this is the course that we're sticking to. And so the next slide is our theory of action, which pulls it all together, that if we build systems and conditions that support schools and nurturing a culture that builds and honors capacity, ensures a sense of belonging, and offers authentic engagement, then our schools will actualize the Worcester Public Schools' vision of a learner for all scholars. This is our course, this is we're staying committed to, and we're gonna update you on how we're doing on that. So then, let me go even a bit deeper and more detailed. So, we just approved, you just approved the strategic plan tonight. I wanna take you to the bottom of this slide, because actually, the, the goals that were drafted with you this school year were based off of data that we pulled from our schools this summer. We know that we needed to work on vision of a learner and really get our, our classrooms and our learning experiences dynamic, integrated, and, and preparing our children for the future. Our third grade reading levels were not where they needed to be, and so we said that must be a goal for the district as well as student engagement. So we actually started with our schools and then, and our school data. And then from there, then I jumped up and I said, all right, let's make sure that that's reflective in the superintendent's goals, so then that's what you'll hear, that's what we brought to you. Then our schools developed their growth plans based off of that. And now we have the strategic plan to guide it. So we kind of, it wasn't linear, but now we've, we're lining it all up, and we're gonna have this through line because we have a strategic plan now. So my goals this year were really bridge goals to get to the strategic plan based off of our data. So the next slide just gives a quick sequence of how this has, what we've been doing. We got those district priorities in place based off of the data, finalized the superintendent's goals, I think a little bit earlier than October, but that's okay, that came next. Then our schools developed their growth plans, and now we have the strategic plan that will guide us through until twenty-twenty-eight. So I want to turn this over to Dr. Koo, who will then talk about the first district goal around the human capacity building. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and I'm going to just ask my leadership team to come to the podium, just in case I miss anything, but also want to make sure that we're always cognizant that this work can never be done alone. It is so important to have a team that surrounds you, to challenge you, support you, and to do this work together. So I just want to introduce to the committee, I can't do both, so I'm just going to say, I have Aiko Epukrombi, I have Dr., Dr. Triata Franju Apostelu, and I have Laura Cahill. And, you know, I am biased, but I think we have the most dynamic and effective team in the Worcester Public Schools outside of Cabinet and School Committee, of course. So, our, the first district goal is really around ensuring a district-wide system for recruitment, hiring retention of a talented, culturally linguistically competent workforce through a culture of belonging and authentic engagement as measured by a ten percent narrowing of the gap between our overall and staff demographics. So in June of twenty-twenty-three, we started at eighteen percent of where our staff was in terms of identifying as being talented, well, talented is an adjective, a culturally linguistically competent workforce. We knew that this is something that we really wanted to make sure we focused on. We talked a lot about making sure that our staff is representative of our students in many different ways. And I am so excited to report that as of today's current date, we are actually, we've exceeded our target. We're actually at twenty-three point seven. And, you know, again, this was an effort that was really supported through lots of systems that we put in place, from building systems and making sure that we interview and look at all qualified candidates who were reflective of our students, being cognizant and vocal about that. So we still have a long way to go, but I am very excited that we did exceed our goal of twenty-three point five percent. We're a little bit over that, but I think it's really great to celebrate this. So, a lot of the work that we have done is really about developing systems for our leaders to really think about how do we do this in a very strategic manner. This year, we've built benches at the leadership level. I think you heard me talk early in the year that a third of our hires at the leadership level were folks who, who identified themselves as being reflective of the students that we serve. We made a concerted effort to really make sure that our hiring practices were consistent across the board. We worked with our leadership team. We're building leadership capacity through developing new leader workshops and an academy for our new leaders so that the work that we do is consistent. So no matter where we go, that we, everyone has same opportunities. We're doing a lot of work through the continuous learning framework, looking at what are our needs, looking at the data, and really thinking about what are the things that we need to continue to systematize. We talk a lot about, you know, these guidebooks that we keep writing, and we joke about that, but the reality is if things are not written down and they're not reinforced and they're not being held accountable, it doesn't get done. So really looking at what are our needs? And then going through the cycle of how do we make sure we're supporting our staff in such a way that, that we continue to grow our staff, that hold lens of recruitment and retention. And the shared accountability, it was really important to make sure that we had our directors there for you to meet all, really the people who do the real work behind the scenes. But also that this is, the, the work of recruitment, retention, and growth is more than just one person. It's everybody, and it falls in the hands of all of us. And it's really important that we continue to articulate the work we're doing. We systematize them, we build systems. We share a lot of information with our leadership team, but also down to our, our staff. And so it's really important to make sure that we have all of these things in place. And the way that we do that is by listening, by learning, by asking for feedback, by looking at the data, getting more data, and then building systems to support all of that. But again, I wanted to share that we are very excited that we've exceeded a goal, but we know we still have a long way to go. So again, I, I thank everyone for continuously push us, and I want to make sure I give any of my directors any opportunity to add anything that I may have forgotten. Thank you. And I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Allen.
Thank you. The, the next goal is to strengthen maintenance protocols and implement school safety recommendations to guarantee the continued modernization of all WPS facilities, cultivating an environment that is both secure and supportive of learning by building capacity and value knowledge as measured by one hundred percent completion of the highest priority emergency projects identified through this safety audit. Within the recent school safety audit by Guidepost Solutions, there were some clear indications that classroom door access, building access, communications, and training were priorities at some of our schools. For example, of the high-party work through the Guidepost recommendation... For example, of the high-party work through the Guidepost recommendations, administration has identified 326 individual classroom and office door lock sets in need of replacement, and in some cases, new doors to be replaced as well. Since the presentation last month by Guidepost Solutions, the Worcester Police and Fire Departments have both approved the door lock set that we chose, and this will be used in all 326 doors, and also become the standard lock for the district going forward. The lock was recommended by both Guidepost and I Love You Guys Foundation, and based on supply chain availability, the plan is to install 100% of these locks by June 30th, 2024. Also with regards to building access, Guidepost has identified locations where additional vestibule be created to eliminate free access to all areas of the school upon entry and will instead limit access to the main office. There's one school where this project will serve as a prototype of vestibules for the district and will be installed by June 30th, 2024. The Facilities Department and School Safety Office have also begun to repair school intercom systems where needed in schools. This work will be a multi-year project, repair and update intercom systems throughout the entire district. And then finally, with regards to training, in August, the District Crisis Communication Response Manual for Personnel was introduced to principals. Also, the I Love You Guys Foundation Standard Response Protocol was reintroduced. Copies were provided to schools to post the protocol in all the classrooms, offices and workspaces. The trainer model is being used this year with the expectation that the protocol would be introduced to all instructional and non-instructional staff. Two days of in-person training with the I Love You Guys Foundation has been scheduled for school and district administration as part of the next August return to school training. All schools submit documentation of the completion of all required drills conducted across the school year to the School Safety Office and to their executive directors. The sheet captures all fire drills, bus evacuation drills, medical drills, and the response, standard response, hold, secure and lockdown drill information.
My, excuse me, my goal is to collaboratively lead school teams in identifying and using multiple sources of evidence to essentially improve outcomes in all schools with a specific focus on grade three tonight. So we are lucky to have Principal Tammy Boyle from Jacob Hyatt and Mary Sealy here from Canterbury Street to provide some of their insights in how we have been working towards this goal. We were tasked with creating a slide that didn't have a lot of words and had a visual about what we hoped to do. So as you see, ours is a lot of books in a circle and three words, focus, implementation and strengthen. So our focus has been from the very first day of the school year to provide grade level reading as a central focus of the work that we would do this year. We understand it's a team effort, it will rely upon the, the skills of everyone in the district, and we are working to provide focus and not to unintentionally add more onto the plates of our very already busy schools, but to provide the guidance and support, the improvement efforts will be needed around this most important goal. The second word we chose was implementation, and we recognize a key to our success will be our ability to execute our rollout plan regarding our new CKLA curriculum. And the work this year is aimed to provide systematic support so that we can provide instructional alignment across all schools, build and design high-quality learning environments, and also make sure that we're working hard to improve classroom procedures. All of these will help with the collective work of building our capacity to deliver on grade level reading results. Strengthen, it has been our aim to expand our collective expertise about reading, and it's interesting, we know more today about how the human brain learns, and we are now adapting our methods and new research to the way our district teaches, is teaching reading. The Q teams and coaches and teachers and principals, everybody's working very hard at the school, and we know more than ever how important this is, and we're showing growth every day. I do have some exciting results to share. Mid-year check, which is just fresh off the press, our star data shows very promising growth. In fact, our mid-year data has reached our end-of-year data percentages of last year. So congratulations to our hard-working teams and schools. On the left-hand side, you see leadership development, continuous improvement, shared accountability and resource. So how do we lead? By staying the course, intentionally and strategically navigating this adoption in a systematic but also an organic and authentic manner. How do we continuously improve? We work at it every day. There are incredible efforts in schools today. Teachers, principals and district staff are hard at work every day and certainly have set us on our way. Shared accountability is an important aspect of our, our work this year to date. We see our role at the district as necessary to the support of schools. The improvement does not lie on the shoulders of a teacher, a principal, a parent, it relies upon the support of all, and the district is there to help solve and provide improvement strategies and resources. And finally, resources. I don't need to remind anyone here tonight how important grade level reading is, as you all have recently invested significant funds into purchasing, purchasing a new curriculum that does embody the science of reading, it is built on current research and how students learn to read. Providing this research and also the necessary positions in the district to help lead this work will set us up and the district up for great success in the future. It will pay dividends. It has taken an investment like this one where the school committee advocated funds and positions to get this complex work properly moving and tackle this most urgent need and challenge of our time, grade level reading. And so I'm going to leave Ask Tammy and Mary, our two superstar principals, who spent their first evening of vacation here with us, to share some testimony about our work to, to date so far.
Good evening. Thank you for inviting us. I just wanted to say that last year, when Dr. Minarez came to visit me at Jacob Hyatt, she asked me what I look for in classrooms and what, what one of my goals was. And my response to her was that I wanted to see like more higher quality tier-one instruction. I, I felt like we were really starting at tier-two and I wasn't seeing enough tier-one. And so I am seeing with CKLA that we are implementing high-quality tier-one instruction so that all children are getting access to this. The preliminary data is showing promising growth, that's for sure. I have a fifth grade group of about 50 students and their district-wide benchmark is showing, we, we don't have, we have one student in the red, one or two in the yellow, and the rest are, are in green, which is incredible. That's, that's, I did not see that type of data when I worked in Princeton. So I'm very, very proud of the work that the teachers and the students are doing. One of my teachers has, has kind of coined this phrase that she has committed herself to implement with integrity instead of fidelity, and it's a mind shift that she has embraced and she is now coaching other staff members to look at it through that lens instead. My teachers are making note of the successes and lessons learned to provide feedback to the rest of the district come year's end. And like Dr. Morse alluded to, our, the, the data at Jacob Hyatt now in week 18 is comparative to the data last year in week 35. So yes, it's, it's going very well. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. Thanks for having us. Dr. Morse asked me to speak about the, how the implementation of CKLA is going at Canterbury. And at this point in the year, we're getting to a more comfortable place with the implementation of the program. Of course, any big change is, is hard, and our teachers are very, our teachers were very invested in the old program that we were using. However, we are aware that there were many gaps that needed to be addressed, especially in the intermediate grades, such as the lack of grammar, spelling and explicit vocabulary instruction and the use of nonfiction texts. Initially, our teachers were very excited to learn what the new program had to offer, and so far, we're seeing many positives. Overall, the program is much more rigorous at every grade level. We're finding that the skills component should be most beneficial with explicit systematic phonemic awareness and phonics instruction. There's lots of student-level data through the use of DIFLs that we're looking at very frequently as a team in our weekly PLCs to ensure that students are making progress toward their individual goals. Intervention groups are flexibly based on this progress monitoring data. Additionally, the knowledge component of the program provides many opportunities for the use of nonfiction text and builds background knowledge for students while developing high-level vocabulary more explicitly, both of which are so important for our students' growth as readers. And the opportunity for student discussion during this portion of the program is especially beneficial for our multilingual learners. We're currently finishing the mid-year benchmark assessment, which ended today, and we're looking forward to another meeting with our CKLA representatives, the first week in January, who will guide us deeper with the use of the data reports available to us. At this time, we will have a better idea of how our progress compares with students nationwide. And back at school, PLC teams will be digging into the data and working together to determine next steps for instruction, including intervention groups based on the most recent data. Thank you.
So I also have the second, the next slide, and we did switch it up a little bit. We put the words on the outside this time, and our three words are strategy, support and improve. And the goal that we're going to be speaking to is how we are working very hard to increase the amount of students that we are able to flip, and that's formerly limited proficient. So what we're trying to do is move our students from up to higher levels of their EPL status. So the, the three big ideas regarding the district's approach to supporting this goal, our strategy, our support, and then improve. We had to really dig into data this year to understand what challenges our multilingual students were facing. We learned that many of our EPL3 students were not progressing and were saying, staying somewhat stuck year after year. And we all know that EPL4s and 5s have the best outcomes in literacy, but we had not yet focused in all district effort around supporting our EPL3s to move forward to become EPL4s and 5s and thus increase their literacy skills. So we adopted a strategy in order to move them forward. So we, again, support all multilingual learners, but today, we now look at specific instructional needs that each student needs and each level needs, and that is essentially our strategy. Support, the growth of multilingual learners does not sit solely in the multilingual office or on the shoulders of only our ESL teachers, it's an all-district effort. Our Q teams work deliberately in the quadrants and have become knowledgeable of each school's needs, where our district's shifting from everyone getting what the district offers to everyone getting what school needs is seeming, is seeming to work. We continue to look at data in different ways to customize our approach and support. So we are providing the support that in resources, teachers and students need rather than what the district thinks they need. We still have lots to do and lots of room for growth, but we are committed, we have committed our entire teaching and learning team to this effort and aim. How do we lead? We lead by setting priorities, by creating a discipline strategy and following these plans to ensure we stay the course, the course that you saw earlier in the presentation. We continuously improve by using data differently and also using data to make decisions. And our shared responsibility for the multilingual learners is it's the responsibility of all. And the resources that we've been able to use this year, CKLA does have the language studio component, so thank you for that, and also allowing us to restructure personnel by using Q teams and restructuring departments to work in an integrated capacity so that we're able to provide the schools with the people and the expertise in order to help better serve our multilingual learners.
Good evening. Marie and I actually share this goal, and my portion of it is the student engagement and sense of belonging and the work that we're facilitating around that. So this is what we know. When we increase students' sense of belonging, they feel a stronger connection to their school community and are more likely to actively participate in school activities, engage in their classes and build positive relationships with their peers and teachers. When we foster a positive school climate, we essentially are creating the conditions that are essential for learning and growth. But when we combine these two vital elements, the byproduct is student engagement. In order to increase students' sense of belonging and foster a positive walking, welcoming and inclusive environment on behalf of student engagement, we're developing our leaders, engaging in continuous learning and shared accountability, and allocating our resources where they make the biggest impact. So Tom Tony, our administrative director of Positive Youth Development, who was here with us tonight. He and I have made it our priority this year to develop our high school deeds. We meet with them weekly and look at our data to learn the impact that our wellness rooms are having on our scholars, and we make unnecessary adjustments. We determine whether our new approach to discipline is effective, and we brainstorm ways on how to better support our teachers with healthy conflict resolution with their students to prevent future escalation and reduce the likelihood of future incidents. We recognize that the physical safety of our scholars and our staff is paramount. Along these same lines and in the spirit of continuous improvement, we have new frameworks and interventions that we have introduced in several of our schools. Tonight, I'm going to focus on the work that we've embarked on with our leaders and their leadership teams around adult SEL. The goal is to provide a clear and coherent set of supports in service of social, emotional learning, programming and implementation. The work ensures that our leaders have knowledge-building opportunities to understand the role of adult SEL and the overall approach to establishing caring communities where staff and students develop their SEL skillsets and mindsets. Also ensures that SEL planning is informed by the context and needs of our culturally diverse communities that we serve, and ensures that teachers begin to develop a shared vision with their peers for cultivating classroom communities where social and emotional learning can take root. We recognize that emotional safety is just as paramount. Our goal is to maximize their personal and professional potential by applying an emotional intelligence lens as they gain clarity in how to improve their relationships with their students and each other by establishing stronger connections and better understanding of the emotions of others and working through difficulties with courage and compassion. It's also important for us to continue to break down those silos. So we need a shared accountability model where everyone shares in the responsibility for achieving our desired state. To that end, last spring, we began meeting with principals to get their culture and climate teams up and running. This year, all schools have them and they meet regularly. Culture and climate team members, which include a variety of school-based staff, are committed to improving their school climate. They engage in collaborative decision-making, actively seek feedback, engage in self-reflection and use data to assess progress. They're also evaluating their practices to make necessary adjustments to ensure that schools are safe physically, socially and emotionally, and that the environment is conducive to learning and teaching and learning. And finally, we are allocating our resources where they make the most sense and they can make the biggest impact. Our eight culture and climate coaches are now part of our Q teams, and we've developed a train-the-trainer model that began this year. These eight coaches provide professional learning and support to schools to help promote a sense of belonging and a positive school environment through positive behavior interventions, restorative practices and our new bullying prevention and intervention. Our data is showing quantitatively and qualitatively that we should persist. So we administered a social, emotional learning pulse check this month through Panorama, and the results were favorable in all of the questions posed and across all grades four through six as compared to the results from last spring. The three questions we asked our scholars, once you get upset, how often can you get yourself to relax? Up two points. How often are you able to pull yourself out of a bad mood? Up three points. When things go wrong for you, how calm are you able to stay? That was up four points. Now, when we move to our secondary students, who are a little more difficult to engage, we had an increase in all questions posed, a significant increase in most in every single grade seven through 12 as compared to our results last spring. These are the five questions. Is there at least one teacher or adult in your school that you can talk to if you have a problem? Up six points. How connected do you feel to the adults at your school? Up 12 points. By the way, it goes up as I read each question. Overall, how interested are you in your classes? Up 14 points since last spring. Overall, how much do you feel like you belong at your school? Up 15 points. And finally, how often are you able to control your emotions when you need to? Up 17 points from the last, from last spring. This really warms my heart, hence my slide with all the hearts. It's important to note that it is our educators and our staff who are with our scholars day in and day out, and they're having a direct impact on their engagement and sense of belonging. So we have our esteemed school-based educators and staff and our Q team members to thank for making this amazing impact on our babies. And I'd like to thank them here tonight for their work, their their dedication, and their belief that anything is possible together. We have a few members here with us tonight to talk a little bit about the work that they're engaging in. So we have one of our culture and climate coaches, Allison Nagroon Campbell, who is also part of our Q teams, here to speak to the continuous learning she's been engaging in on behalf of sense of belonging.
Thank you. Thank you. It's really nice to be here. My name's Allison Campbell, and I am one of eight SEL coaches for the district. And we are coming to think of ourselves as implementation drivers for a culture of belonging. This has been really exciting work. We're led by Jean Conway. She's our supervisor in culture and climate. And I'm here to talk to you just briefly about two interventions, but really just want to acknowledge that this culture of belonging, it just, it just means so much to me. This is where we can begin to embed into our MTSS fully-integrated social-emotional behavioral and academic strategies that include cultural responsiveness, relationship building. You know, it's, the, the potential is just unlimited. So if we can add all these evidence-based things into a really rich MTSS, our kids are going to get what they need. So I'm so excited to be a part of this, and thank you. So we, we already know that SEL is evidence-based, but we have had an amazing time engaging in a couple of training initiatives. The first one is really focused on adult SEL. And I think in order for us to take care of our kids, we really need to take care of our educators. So we're involved in a train-the-trainer model and also engaged in some leadership coaching with Gianna Casetta. She is amazing. She's published. She's an SEL coach. She has started schools. She worked in New York City. And she's just really versed in this work. So she has us all jazzed up and ready to go. The leadership training is really around preparing leadership to begin to shift culture, be more emotionally attuned to their staff, and also, you know, ready teachers to do this important work. And I already feel the benefits of it. We worked on vision, vision statements, and it was just really powerful. So we are looking forward to launching this work in five high schools and one middle school to start, and hope we have more opportunity ahead. The other set of opportunities, the interventions that we're launching, include something that's kind of cool. It came from San Bernardino, California, if, if you can believe it. And it's called the Undercover Anti-Bullying Team. And, you know, it's, it's part of a restorative practice intervention that includes restorative mediation for students that don't require a bullying intervention. But the UABT is really super cool and super effective. And so what happens is we actually involve the bully in the solution. And that sounded scary to me at first, but I think it really fits with restorative justice, that we don't push away the offender. We don't reject the offender. We work with the offender to become a part of the community and to develop those skills they need to also belong. So it's really strategic. We, we meet with a student and then work with a team who is undercover, and they support that student in feeling safe in school. And it's progress monitored, and, you know, we're really excited about launching that. We've had other training initiatives that have been completed, so we're ready to move on to these things. So this is still in the developing phases. But thank you so much for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Next, we have Tammy Boyle. She's got double duty tonight. Our Jacob Hyatt principal here to speak to the work that she's engaging in with her culture and climate team to positively impact her school climate.
Thank you. One of the things that we did first was actually give the teachers the Panorama survey, the same questions that the students take to kind of gauge how the teachers were feeling about their work and the sense of belonging that they have at our school. And then we brought the survey data back to our culture and climate team to actually come up with ways to ensure that, in particular, our newer teachers were feeling like truly a part of our community. Something else that we've done is, one of my favorite new books, The Leader in Me, is something that our culture and climate team is, is reading and kind of taking the lead in reading, but all of the other leadership teams at Jacob Hyatt are also reading this, including parents and site council. And we even have some sixth-grade students that are reading it. So we are moving towards embracing this philosophy, this mindset, and challenging one another about our value systems. You know, why are we, what is our why? Why are we working with students? And kind of taking some of the systems and programs that we already have in place, like PBIS, and looking to see how that fits here with The Leader in Me. So the goal is first to kind of get those seven habits across our staff so that they then can support students to become leaders at our school. And it's, I can say that this book has been very unifying across the staff. You know, we have a diverse staff in terms of, you know, number of years' teaching, and this has definitely been something that the, I think people are very invested in and seeing through. So just wanted to finish with reading our, our mission statement. We at Jacob Hyatt Magnet School strive to help our students achieve their potential. To improve our school culture, we will focus on leadership. Through the Leader in Me philosophy, we strive to empower our school community to self-advocate, take responsibility for their learning, and become innovative thinkers and problem solvers. Our students will learn the academic lessons they need and acquire the social-emotional skills they need for their future. Thank you.
Thank you.
And finally, we have Mr. Dan Falcoochi, our dean at Burncoote High School, here to give you a firsthand account on how the work that he's facilitating with his team is helping to make an impact on student engagement.
Thank you for having me here tonight. I've been in a fortunate position where last year I spent the year as grade-nine coordinator for the school. So I've been able to roll over a lot of those responsibilities into dean this year. And while it's not the sole focus, grade-nine is definitely a big part of what we do. And the reason I say that is if we're going to increase sense of belonging, if we're going to increase student engagement, it's vital that we reach them as they're entering high school. Students are not going to feel a sense of belonging, and they're not going to be engaged if they're not successful when they enter high school. So we've been focusing a lot on that immediate success when they enter high school. So some of the work we've done for grade-nine, we've worked to create work prioritization systems for our grade-nine learners. We've worked with equitable grading practices. We've made data visibility at the forefront or put it at the forefront for all of our staff to see. We've put after-school supports in place, and we do a lot of common planning time for our grade-nine educators. And what this has resulted in? If we go back to two years ago, right after the pandemic ended, school year '21-'22, quarter one of 2021, we had about 57% of our grade-nine students who passed all of their classes. If we look two years later, quarter one this year, we're now at about 75% of our grade-nine students passing all of their classes. So in just two years' time, we've seen an 18% increase. We're also making good use of our wellness room restorative practice in our climate and culture specialists. We now have a team of three climate and culture specialists who are building relationships with our students. They're supporting our learners. They are pushing students into class in a positive way to keep them in class, engaged on their learning. With our wellness room, we're engaging in restorative practices during the day and after school. These restorative practices are providing us invaluable alternatives to suspension. It's not just about delivering a consequence to a student, but it's supporting our learners to take ownership of their actions, take accountability, and make better decisions. These restorative interventions might involve a conversation with the teacher, a conversation with a peer, giving back to the community, something that's allowing the students to take ownership of their actions. And with this restorative work, we've also been tracking all of the data, which is leading us to PD for our staff. So our November Day, part of our staff's professional development, was data that me and the wellness room instructor Lindsay Galio gathered to put together some social-emotional support for our staff to better support the learners when they're in the classroom. We're also providing social-emotional support for our learners during the day in the wellness room. We're using the wellness room to transition students back from long-term suspension and hospitalization to get them back in the classes more quickly. We currently have about 35 students who have social-emotional access to the wellness room that gives them a place, a spot to re-regulate themselves in a timely manner so they're then capable of re-entering class and staying in class on a more consistent basis. So big picture, what does all this mean? First and foremost, more successful ninth graders will be more connected to the school, have a greater sense of belonging, increasing student engagement, more likely to graduate in time, so on and so on. We're also significantly lowering our suspension rates. If you look at last year through December, we had issued 63 suspensions at Burncoote High School. December this year, as of today, that number's down to 48. If you look at our grade-nine for that same timeframe, it was 36 through December last year. That's now down to 20 this year for our grade-nine learners. So by making students feel more successful, by providing alternatives to suspension, we are keeping students in class, getting them that sense of belonging. So in closing, while we still have a lot of work to do, I believe we are showing that we're making huge strides at Burncoote High School. And I'm really excited about the opportunity to work to fundamentally change what education looks like. And this position, I firmly believe, is allowing myself and other schools across the district to do that. Thank you for your time.
I'll close by saying we still have a lot of work to do, just like Dan said. This is just the beginning. We'll continue to roll up our sleeves, like I often say, because our scholars deserve our very best. They deserve to thrive in a positive environment. They deserve to be engaged in all of the opportunities that are available to them. And we do this because they matter. They all belong. And I'll turn it over now to Dr. Monáe.
Thank you. So I'm going to close this up. The final goal is my professional goal. As you know, as a second-year superintendent in the state of Massachusetts, I'm to participate in the new superintendent induction program. And the, the project that is required at the end of the year is a strategic strategy with the passage or the exception, accepting of the strategic plan tonight. I can check that off. I have met that goal. I will continue, of course, to attend the, the sessions, but we're done in that area. So with that, I'll close up. Next slide. I brought this, this visual to the committee early in the school year. And so I want to just remind us. So I started out by saying we're staying the course. The course is not that straight line. Nothing is linear in life. We make plans. We stay on the course. And on that course, we're going to have this squiggle, right? This is what the reality looks like. Our data is looking good, but we just got this data. We need to go deeper into it, make sure that our different student groups are, are excelling as well as everyone else, make sure that the boys are doing as well as the girls. I know that's an important piece for the committee. And so we anticipate that there will be changes along the way, but we will continue to embrace the squiggle. Because next slide, it is still always about each and every day, these children who walk across our stage at graduation, making sure that they have the skills and dispositions that are in our vision of a learner so that when life throws the squiggles at them, they can manage them and not feel like they don't have what is necessary to be that thriving adult. And so I'm really, really happy on where we are as a district. And I want to take this opportunity, I'm sorry that I'm missing one of my committee members, to, to thank all of you. It is bittersweet tonight to share where we're at because I know that we're here because of this governance team and the support that you have provided, the guidance you've given. You've pushed on us as necessary. You have not rubber stamped by any means. When there's something that's not working or that you're hearing from the community, you let us know. And then we come prepared to respond in a way that is still moving the district. And, and that makes a difference for children. What the adults do makes a difference for children. So we became a very quickly high-functioning governance team. I am incredibly grateful. I know that the cabinet is grateful as well. And what people don't realize is how important the, this team is to the health of the organization. Because the people who are sitting in the audience here today need to know, and those who are watching need to know, that we are working together for the schools. And when we work together, that's when things happen for children. We can have bits and pieces of little projects here and there, and some children will do fine. But our responsibility is to every child in Worcester Public Schools. And so I want to thank those who are here with me tonight. Thank you for selecting me to lead this district. It's been a while. It's not been two years yet, but it's been a while. It's been a great journey, and I look forward to continuing the work. And I hope and I expect that the three who are not going to be official members of the, the committee still stay highly engaged. And I look forward to continuing the work with our existing committee members and our new ones. With that, I return it back to you.
Thank you. Any questions? Member Novak?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's funny, I was, this perhaps is not what people would expect, but instead I was looking at the agenda. I was thinking that this was one of the things that was going to make me most sad, because like, talk about leaving halfway through, right? But then I, I got a little bit of a foretaste when I talked to Dr. Morris this morning, who was like really, really excited about potential reading results. And yeah, so then, you know, we've already surpassed the, the goal for HR, and, you know, we've already got the, you know, seeing urine reading results, and we're already seeing these enormous amounts of growth in terms of the Panorama results. I expected Mr. Allen to plan for the locks. That wasn't a surprise. Already have the strategic plan done, right? So hey, that's fantastic, right? And that, and I know, this is the thing that's really great. I know that no one is going to now say, oh, all right, well, we're all set for the year then. So I will look forward, because yes, I will, I will follow this, to where you're, we are then at the end of the year and what that means. The other thing, and I know that I've said this before, and thank you for being patient with an extraordinarily long meeting, those of you who are here. I am experiencing more excitement from staff in my day-to-day, but certainly you have brought it forward over and over again in committee meetings. And that is enormously encouraging, first of all, to me as a parent, but I also know that you can't fake that, right? I mean, I taught, you're not going to get people to show up at a school committee meeting, as you've pointed out, the night of the start of vacation, to sort of say like, this is amazing. This is fantastic. This is a great opportunity. You can't, you can't like fake that. So that's an incredible thing to be witnessing as well. Because that's, as we know, we can sit here, we can make plans, we can pass things. But unless it's actually happening in the schools and actually happening in the classrooms, it doesn't do us any different. It doesn't make any difference. And so, you know, I, I also, I, I am encouraged ongoingly by this leadership because part of what you've shown, because while, yes, we're seeing some new faces here, we're also seeing some people who have been with the district for a while. And honestly, I think that part of what you've shown is that we always had the power, we just had to learn it for ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Member Kamara?
Thank you. I also want to commend the administration that she continued to put in this mid-year, mid-cycle review in the mid-year to the committee and all of the work that you each have put into this and all of the staff and principal in the district who are here today. What I do want to say that is also commendable is, you know, as my colleague has mentioned, grade-three reading, I think that's very impressive. And the access data showing the mid-year equals, the data equals what it was for last year, end of last year. Those are all impressive. I'm also really happy to hear for the students with language, so formerly limited proficient students. I think that was one of the things that we talked about in terms of moving students along who have been in classes where they are receiving services but not really integrated into like the full curriculum as other students. So it's really impressive to see that with the multilingual program. And it's, it's fascinating to see, you know, the, our school safety also moving along. I think that's one of the huge measures or issues as we move along as a district in terms of protecting safety, whether it means safety for, you know, each individual or student or our educators, those are all important things to, to list. I do want to continue to advocate and continue to push as, you know, for when, when looking at the data with regards to... data with regards to our retirement recruitment, hiring, and retention, I think we've done a lot of work, and I've said this over and over, and I'll continue to advocate for this, even if I'm on or not on the school committee, I think that we can do a lot better with regards to recruitment and reteainment and recruitment of different staff with different backgrounds, BIPOC and LANA. And while I am, you know, optimistic in terms of the last year and a half with coming to our district, with regards to, you know, the upper management, things have changed significantly, I will continue to, you know, express that that's an area that I think that, you know, progress, you know, will continue to be made. I'm also, and I'm also excited to learn that we are, because we didn't have these things before, such as addressing bullying in the public schools, such as having programs to actually counter and support our students, this as all of the measures that we put into our wellness and mental health plan for the district for the next five years. And I, you know, those are all important measures, and I know that we are making headways on a lot of them, and we have five years to continue, you know, to continue that progress, but I will also want to amplify the work of that as we go in terms of understanding what the data shows to decrease if some of the incidences that we have been having throughout the years versus having a program in place, and then what that program is going to do to the numbers in terms of how we are supporting our students. I think I am always happy to hear, you know, happy things, and we're doing so well, but I also want to continuously to express the need that we should, as we all have included data in here tonight, I heard really fascinating things, but one of the things that I would like to say is that we continue to do that work and not look at, you know, the data that we are here, that we've heard tonight. Lastly, I would like to get the copy of all of the data that I heard that was not provided here with regards to the progress, and if I can get that also from the, I don't know, like, that could be compiled with the notes for public records, that would be appreciated, appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, nobody else. Nice report, nice job. Teachers are doing great, I should say, the educators are doing great. It's good with good leadership, so I appreciate everything you've done, and our students are going to succeed because of it, or should I say, our scholars are going to succeed. What's that?
It's the second few of those numbers.
Yeah. Everything seems to go in the right direction, and very good. Okay. So the motion is, the motion is to file. All those in favor, opposed or ordered. Report to the scanning committee, teacher and learning student supports.
Thank you. The Standing Committee on Teaching, Learning, and Student Supports met on December 12th, 2023. Members in attendance were myself, member mailman, and member Kamara. The first item was two-dash-nine-four-point-three, request that the administration provide an update on the Worcester Public Schools' opt-in and opt-out options regarding the sex ed curriculum, and provide the full scope of the program per grade level and information regarding the hiring of staff. This has been an ongoing item in committee. It was initially filed in March of 2022, so we had some additional updates to motions that have been made along the way. We received information that there were three thousand seven hundred and seventy-two opt-outs for this year, which is fifteen point five percent, which closely mirrors the data from the past two years, and we are fully staffed at this time, although a few teachers are out on leave, and there are long-term subs covering. Member mailman made a motion to continue to track the opt-out data, and Dr. Gagnes noted that there is an approved K through twelve health curriculum, of which sex ed is a piece, and she clarified that there is an opt-out option on the sex ed piece of the health curriculum only. Member Kamara made a motion to do a deep dive into the data to reveal the reasons for fluctuation in data in some schools and not others. I made a motion to combine member mailman's motion and member Kamara's motion to track data and do a deep dive in the fluctuation of the data by school, and hold the item until June of 2024. On a motion that passed three to zero. The next item is GB two-dash, excuse me, GB three-dash-two-four-two-point-one, request an update from administration regarding after-school programming at the elementary level throughout the district and plans for growth and expansion. Executive Director Kelly noted that after-school programs are running based on data and are ultra-focused on closing the achievement gap. She noted that these programs are grant-funded through Esser Grants. Funding to keep these programs in place in future years is to be determined, but that we are hoping to continue to keep these programs going because they are targeted and beneficial for our students. I made the motion to accept and file the report, and on a motion of vote of three to zero, the motion carried. And our final item was CNP zero-dash-one-three-point-one, an item that was initially filed in 2020 to consider a communication from the Racism Free Worcester Public School Group regarding nine areas of concern. These areas of concern had been based on concerns from a prior administration. We received a report that the committee had, excuse me, that the administration had taken the nine action items very seriously and had been addressed and were given backup to support that, and the committee members had conversation regarding the importance that this administration has put on these items. Member Kamara noted that she was pleased to see that these items are part of the plan, were actionable items, and not just lip service, and have become cultural competencies for teachers and staff. I made a motion to accept and file the report, and on a vote of three to zero, the motion passed, and then we adjourned.
Motion to approve. Those in favor, opposed or ordered. We have financial operations held on December nineteenth, then on December twentieth.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I do want to note, by the way, that we, we've been giving Mr. Chairman a cross course in something of everything this week, including an extensive finance and operations agenda, and then a Zoom one, and then governance. And also, I do, there really isn't another context to say this, but can we just acknowledge all the work that Casey Roy has been doing over the past number of months, by the way? I mean, you want to talk about, I mean, she's had something of everything in terms of, like, who she's been answering to, what office she's been in, and just sort of like, keeps chugging away and sending us emails and updating, and I don't, I don't want to let this slip without acknowledging how much that has been for you, and, and thank you, because we can't do any of this, at least legally, without what you do, so thank you for it. The Standing Committee on Finance and Operations met on December nineteenth at four P.M., and essentially, Mr. Allen brought everybody who directly works for him, and we had reports from almost all of finance and operations over the course of it. We did have four public comments, including one from a public petitioner, and then several others that were related to that, plus one that was in response to the item regarding school nutrition, as well as a grant for Afghan students. We first took up the public petition, which was about the limitations around number of students on a bus, the question of bus monitors, and assignment of bus routes. It is not going to be news to anyone here that the sensitivity around this, as well as the next item, is really about the number of drivers that we can have, so let me take this opportunity to, again, note that the Worcester Public Schools is hiring bus drivers and monitors, and you should please come work for us. There was also a note, by the way, that the new charter school, which we are legally required to provide transportation to, I just want to echo the shock and horror with which member Kamara greeted that, is part of what the limitations are. So we did make a motion to file that, which passed on a motion of two to one. And then in terms of the district transportation policy, again, same story here, although we did receive a really interesting report that I want to commend to the attention of my colleagues who are continuing, because we actually had the data people go take a look at attendance and how close students live to school within that walk zone. And the upshot here is for every quarter-mile away from school, for high school students, students missed one point two-five days of school on average. Again, there's limitations in terms of the number of drivers we have. We did also have a conversation around our partnership with the WRTA and what that does and doesn't mean. And on a motion to file that passed three to zero. Pilot provision of menstrual products, and this is another one where we're bringing it home. Those are, those, dispensers are being installed next week. And so, since we filed the initial item on January twelfth of 2022, we're squeaking in under the wire here for the two-year thing, but they are going in outside of the bathrooms at the secondary schools. We did hear from administration that this is considered one, phase one, and there will be provision of being made in phase two for elementary schools. That motion was then filed on a vote of three to zero. Flagpoles, we did get a report that talked about the protocol to review flagpoles, have them inspected on a regular basis and ensure that they're operational, and we then made a motion to file the report on a motion of three to zero. That was part of the building maintenance report, so that one is still being held in what will become finance, operations, and governance, and I anticipate that my colleagues will be taking that up. In terms of vaping detectors, so Dr. Morris had clearly had assembled a committee, took a look not only at the options that were available, and in terms of how they would integrate with current security systems, but also did some work in terms of both what our secondary administrators would want and or need, or what concerns or questions they would have, and also spoke with IT professionals in other districts. There was a bunch of back-of-the-envelope math happening, because we had sort of the full amount, and then, then those of us in the committee were doing some additional amount. We, there was several concerns that were raised by committee members, which I would sum up as saying, first of all, it's a significant amount of money for going into an individual school. And then also, and I want to say that, that member Kamara made this point quite eloquently during the meeting, that in terms of what's best practice for changing student behavior, there actually are public health best practices that we should be ensuring and pursuing first before what we're doing is essentially installing fairly expensive equipment. So we made a motion to decline the pilot program, and then made an additional motion to recommend both public health and personnel solutions towards vaping. And a voice vote, those motions passed three to zero. Ms. Lombardi gave us an update on the lunch and nutrition options, and here's one where I want to, again, highlight something around hiring, because this actually surprised me. We're a hundred nutrition staff short. We employ, by the budget, just over three hundred, which means that we're staffed at only two-thirds capacity for school nutrition, which isn't, we should be considering that kind of an emergency, I would say. I think that because nutrition sort of just gets in there and gets it done and continues to feed our kids, that perhaps, and I honestly kind of blame myself for not asking this question earlier, we've let it sort of pass. We are getting some, there's lots of work that's going on in nutrition in terms of recruiting and so forth, but that is something that we all should be informed on. There's some work going on in terms of streamlining the application process. We should, and our colleagues actually did call this out, also honestly commend the school nutrition people that we have, because they're working, you know, enormously above and beyond, and coming out of a time that's been really difficult, honestly, for school nutrition. So I do want to pass that along. On a motion to three to zero, the item was filed. We received a report from Mr. Walton regarding IT. This was looking at sort of what are the needs of IT, what are some policy implications? He gave us an overview of all of that, did recommend a potential chief security officer for future planning, and we did, of course, then also look at the, that ongoing cycle we have in terms of replacement of Chromebooks. Now, I know that we have an item on Chromebooks later on the agenda. I did just want to flag for my colleagues, we got a really good explanation, I thought, from Mr. Walton in terms of, that we, that in terms of numbers, we have a one-to-one district. In terms of how that's being implemented at individual schools, that varies. And so people's impression at the school level of the level of Chromebooks may vary based on how that's happening at their own school. So I would commend that to my colleagues' attention, because I think that it matters. On a motion of three to zero, that item was filed. We received a report after discussion with the city solicitor regarding hiring our own school attorney. There was, we understood that the city to be, to be doing some hiring themselves, and also that we do have the contract liaison that has been working on improving workflow. We filed that motion on a vote of three to zero. Ms. Consalvo gave us a report on the implementation, and Ms. Cahill, sorry, on the implementation of the Workday system, which is our enterprise system that the city is putting into place, but obviously the schools have, with the number of employees and so forth, enormous role to play there. And they phased, they gave us not only what has already happened, but what is coming, what the plans are on that, important stuff that, I mean, much like a lot of what goes on, I find, in operations, is kind of invisible until those things sort of don't work. So on a motion of three to zero, we passed, we filed the item. We had a conversation around the budget calendar, which, for my colleagues who didn't look at it, has some additions this year because of the teacher advisory being consulted, the family and community groups being consulted, the student advisory being brought in, and just that integration is, again, as we've said, so much a hallmark of this administration. And so we did ask that that information be shared on the district website. Member Kamara also further asked that there be some sort of discussion, that there be potentially a video produced in terms of actually talking about timelines and when people can get involved. Motion to three to zero, that item was filed. And then finally, we had had a public petitioner ask around federal and state grants. We'd had, is it out of date to refer to it as a flow chart? We received a page that actually described how grants come in, what happens to them over the course of the year, when it is that the school committee gets reports. As my colleagues are aware, the grants that we get annually are in our budget. When we have grants come in over the course of the year, we actually get them as part of the committee. There's an extensive report that goes to us as part of that, and then there actually are regular audits that we're required to have by various laws and regulations. And so on a motion of three to zero, the motion passed. Member Kamara and I both had words to say regarding the work that we've been able to do with finance and operations this term, and on a voice vote, the motion to adjourn passed, the meeting adjourned at six-thirty-five. That is the meeting from Tuesday, Mr. Chair.
Motion to approve. Probably doing so. Counselor John.
Thank you to the chair. And just in regards to that report, I just want to just talk about the vague thing. As I watched the meeting and listening, and I appreciate the administration for the report, I actually thought it was very good and extensive, and it explained a lot. I can tell you that I'm actually surprised in the vote that my colleagues took on this, and I would tell you that, because I think over the two years, I think we have sat here and listened to students talk about the issue with bathrooms and, and what students are doing in there, vaping, and what, and when we sit here and we talk about safe and healthy schools, I think this is part of it. And the administration came back with a recommendation of a pilot, and being around, knowing what a pilot is, it's something that you just do, you take a look at that you're not committed to, you see if it's effective or not. I think that we, I think in this situation, based on the safe and healthy of our kids in school, we potentially had an ability to at least make, take a shot at it and see whether or not it works or not. You know, some people might make an argument that it may not be worth it, but again, I, when you're talking about pilot, that's what a pilot technically is. You know, I would also say, and, you know, you have kids that refusing to go to the bathroom because kids in the bathroom doing things that they shouldn't have to do. I don't think any kid should be subjected to that, going to school, you know, right? Be very interested to see what happened if we were locked in his room for seven point, six point five hours out of the day, and went to the bathroom, and people were vaping in there. I don't, I don't think any of us would be happy. I really thought that we have an opportunity here to just take that up on the recommendation on the administration on the pilot. Clearly, I don't have the votes to do anything about that tonight, so unfortunately, Chair, I would just maybe take this up at a later date. Thank you.
Those in favor, opposed or ordered. Okay, we have the meeting of the twentieth.
Thank you. So we also took up mostly just editorial updates to all of Section D, which is the fiscal policies. The one discussion that we did have is, as my colleagues are aware, there was an update to Mass General Law Chapter Thirty-B with regard specifically to school districts. And Mr. Allen related to us that there is an agreement with the city financial department that would allow the Worcester Public Schools in an emergency to access that, essentially that sort of increased capacity, but that his feeling was that we didn't actually need to make any other, any further changes to the policy. was that we didn't actually need to make any other, any further changes to the policies as proposed. And so on a roll call vote of three to zero, we passed the updates as they were proposed.
Those in favor, opposed or ordered. Okay, don't that. So we have grants, and number N, we have two grants. Take those collectively. Roll call.
Member Clancy, member McCullough.
I'm sorry, I see. Novak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know that it's a late night and a long meeting, but the, the IDEA targeted, federal targeted special education improvement grant looks at something that is pretty exciting for, in particular for our families who have students who are on individual education plans. As my colleagues might recall, we are, the state has actually updated the IEP process, and that partnership that we have, we hope it's a partnership with families in putting those individual education plans together, is what this money is directed at. And I did hope, Mr. Chair, that we could potentially just give Dr. Murray a chance to give us a very brief sort of perspective on what that work is going to look like for the Worcester Public Schools, because it's something that I know for, for families who have this need, they really have been looking forward to, and paying a lot of close attention to. So is it possible to ask Dr. Murray to give us that?
Doctor? Oh, oh, come on up, I didn't see you back there.
You got it. Through the chair. So just very briefly, since we're at the end of the meeting, the 274 IDEA federal targeted special education program improvement grant, we were able to put together pretty quickly. Of course, nothing is done individually, so I want to credit Danielle Perillo from the grants department and two of my supervisors in special education, Kathy Naparada and Rachel Codra. I think we turn this around in about three days. So we were able to apply for, the grant amount was $204,670. And the grant, the real purpose of the grant is because there, as many of you may know, and some of you may not know, but we're going to be mandated in the fall of 2024 to implement a new IEP, and that will involve a completely new form. It hasn't been updated in 20 years. It's very different than the form we're using now, so that's going to involve a lot of training. And it, some of the exciting parts of it, though, is that it's very strength-based. It's focused on, it's very family-friendly. It allows students to have a vision within the IEP a lot more than the, the form that we're currently using. And it even allows students as young as three years old, so there's a section on the IEP, the new IEP for students from three to age 13, to, you know, give some input into, you know, I guess one of the questions I have right here is, this year I want to learn, what do you want to learn? By the time I finish either elementary or middle school, what do I want to learn? And then in high school, there's additional questions such as, well, I'm in high school, I want to, after I finish high school, my education or training, training plans are, after I finish high school, my employment plans are, after I finish high school, my independent living plans are. So currently, we do do some of this work now, but it's definitely going to be more geared into listening and learning to see what the student's vision is, what the parent's vision is, using the IEP to, in a meaningful way, to help see what the student's future goals are. So some of the rollout of the IEP, this, this money will be used primarily for training. Some of the training will look like, for example, we have, if, if we're approved for this grant by the school committee, we will be contracting with American, AIR, American Institutes for Research, the Collaborative Educational Services, some of our special education administrators and evaluation team chair people will also be providing training throughout the district. We'll be able to provide stipends for administrators and teachers to provide some of that, so use train the trainer type model. All of our teachers, general education, special education teachers will be able to be trained on this new IEP. Parent professionals, parents, we already have a parent meeting set up for March 6th, so the parents, the CPAC is really excited about being able to, you know, be educated on this new plan that we have and learn how it will be implemented at the different individual education plan meetings. We plan to have the principals all trained at one of our principal meetings, or maybe before school starts. We'll have to, you know, figure that plan out. And then with the AIR training that will be done, there'll also be follow-up monthly meetings for question and answers, because once we roll out the, out the IEP, there will probably be a lot of additional questions, so we'll provide additional training. And then the second big piece of this grant is for software tools and updates. So those are the, those are really the areas that we'll be using it for. And just to let people know, there's a few additional big changes to the new IEP. One is that the transition plan form will now be included in the IEP. Accommodations and modifications will be spelled out more, not just in academic settings, but in non-academic settings and extracurricular activities. The service delivery grid will also include an additional grid for extended year services, and there'll be additional questions directly related to assistive technology.
So first of all, thank you for hanging in there with us tonight and then being ready to give us all of that. For any of you who've had, you know, anyone close to you go through the IEP process, it's sort of, you know, it's just a form until your family kind of runs headlong into it, and then it's what you kind of live and die by. So this is a really big deal for, for our families. Obviously, it will make a big deal for our staff as well. And thank you for providing that update. I know that, that parents will be looking forward to the March step back meeting to be able to actually get their update on that. I will plan to vote acceptance, Mr. Chair.
Roll call.
Member Clancy, member McCullough, vice chair Johnson.
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member mailman?
Yes.
Member O'Connell Novick?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, we are on general business. Ms. McCullough, to review the Chromebook policies regarding loss, damage replacements order to ensure one, one-to-one ratio, so refer that governs employees. Those in favor, opposed or ordered. Request administration establish a school safety advisory committee. I think the schools are going in a very good direction, and I think the community needs to be part of this variety of people, including law enforcement and community members, parents, maybe even some of our scholars. What do you think there? And because I think the truth, I think we'd like to get the facts out on the, the schools and what's going on, and what the good, the good job the deans are doing, it's in, in the schools, and they're making a difference. So we refer that to the administration. Those in favor, opposed or ordered. Consider approve of the Worcester Public School Full Service Community School model. Refer that to teaching and learning. Those in favor, opposed or ordered. Ms. Novick, after appropriate community consultation to name the suitable Worcester Public School facility and honor the former superintendent, Dr. Boone, that's going to be referred to administration with consultation with the report back on a suitable location.
Very briefly, Mr. Chair. It wore it up to me. We would not name facilities after people. However, the district was here before me, and it will be here after me, and Worcester has a tradition of naming facilities after superintendents. Dr. Durkin, of course, his name is on the administration building. Dr. Garvey is on the parent information center. Dr. Caredonio is honored with an eye to his service to students who were English learners with our new citizen center. And then, of course, we were there, several of us were there the day before Thanksgiving for the new athletic facility at South High School, which leaves us with one rather glaring in my mind exception, which is Dr. Melinda Boone, who of course served the district, who's actually the first superintendent I worked with. And so it felt as if it was a bit of unfinished business. I have the strong opinions as to what it is, but I do think that we can't leave that particular life of service unrecognized, given the, essentially the tradition of the district in recognizing superintendents in such a fashion. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll send that to the administration. Those in favor, opposed or ordered. To prioritize the full middle and high school complex of Massachusetts School Building Authority process for Brunkhold High School. Member Novick?
As it reads.
Those in favor, opposed or ordered. Considering the attached updates to Worcester Public School Policy B, make, make nations approve. Member Novick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I, I did, true to the end here, sit down with Section B and see if we missed anything. And there's, there's one additional one that I think you, we really need to do tonight. So Policy BBBE is the policy that has to do with succession if there is a vacancy. We have to update it because what we currently do doesn't work, it doesn't stand for the new committee that comes in on January 2nd. What I am proposing, Mr. Chair, and I can read it aloud if people would like, but the, the amendment to the municipal charter does actually spell that out. And essentially, the process is the same as it currently would be. It's just as different, it's just as for the district seats and then the at-large seats, which is if a seat falls vacant, whoever was the person who came in next during the election actually then succeeds. What I would propose is that Policy BBBE be changed to actually simply include that language. And I cut it and pasted it right from the bill that was passed by the state legislature. It, what it says is at, at-large committee member, if a vacancy shall occur amongst the two at-large members of the school committee, said vacancy shall be filled in the same manner as provided for a municipal charter, Section 2-10A, for the filling of vacancies in the office of council at large from among the candidates for election for the office of committee member at large at the preceding regular municipal election. And then the district committee member has the same language, although what it references is municipal charter, Section 4-6A. And obviously, I will provide this to our clerk rather than expect you to get it from what I'm saying. But I do think that we do need to add that, that amendmentation as well, Mr. Chair. Beg your pardon? No, but it was an oversight.
Roll call.
Member Clancy, member McCullough, vice chair Johnson.
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member mailman?
Yes.
Member O'Connell Novick?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes.
Okay. We already did the next one. And that's it. So inaugural is on January 2nd. And then I wish everybody a happy holiday. Thank you for the great work. Look forward to working with you next year. Motion to adjourn. Those in favor, opposed or ordered.